Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hey.
Hi, Superintendent Duffy. Hi, everybody.
Howdy.
Hi, Trustee Panas, Trustee Lada. Awesome. Okay. So let's get started as Trustee Cuevas and Trustee Phillips join us. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call to order the July 15, 2020, regular meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. Thank you for joining us this evening. I hope everyone is joining us tonight doing well at home and that their families are in good health and staying as safe as possible, too. We continue to meet via Zoom for all district and board meetings. Authorized by the Governor's Emergency Executive Order issued on March 17, 2020, the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education will conduct board meetings via video conference and teleconference until further notice. Before we recess to close session, I would like to remind the community that to be called to share their public comment, they need to either raise their hand on the Zoom app or press asterisk nine of tuning in via phone call, followed by asterisk six to unmute once your name is called. Thank you, everyone. Do we have any public comment before we go to close session?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Great. So then we're going to recess to close session, and we will be back for open session at 6:30. Thank you. Trustee Cuevas is present, Superintendent Duffy. We need one third board member to join us so we can begin the meeting. Trustee Panas has joined us, and Trustee Lada will be joining us shortly. So as Trustee Phillips, okay, let's get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting. I would like to call to order the July 15, 2020, regular meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, thank you for joining us tonight, and I hope that everybody who's joining us for a meeting is doing well and that their families are in good health and staying as safe as possible, too. We continue to meet via Zoom for all district and board meetings. Authorized by the Governor's Emergency Executive Order issued on March 17, 2020, the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education will conduct board meetings via video conference until further notice. Again, welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. We continue to work diligently with a focus on serving students and families. And I want to sincerely thank students, families, and staff for working collaboratively and tirelessly to create a framework on which to build an educational plan for the fall term. I also want to thank every community member that tuned in and participated in the town hall on Friday and offer their feedback via the Thought Exchange app. Thank you to all WCCU students, families, and employees and community members for how you have continued to support each other during this time. Thank you to everyone working with urgency to ensure that children in our communities are safe and healthy during the summer months. And thank you to each staff and volunteer distributing meals at school and community sites. I would like to share some basic instructions regarding how we're going to use Zoom today and involve members of the public. We will have live public comment via Zoom. This may result in some uncomfortable situations, so we hope you will bear with us as we navigate issues that may come up. It is our hope for members of the public to be able to participate and share their public comment with a board in a space conducive to a respectful public forum to all. During the meeting, all board members and the superintendent will be on video throughout the board meeting. Staff members are also present and will be on video when they present. Members of the public will not be on video and will be muted throughout the meeting unless they have raised their hand for public comment. In order to comment on an agenda item at tonight's meeting, members of the public should raise their hand by pressing the Raise Your Hand button on the Zoom app or by pressing asterisk nine by telephone when the board reaches the item on which you want to comment. If you're calling in with your phone when your name is called, press star or asterisk six to unmute your phone. When we get to the item, a member of district staff will call your name. Comments will be restricted to the amount of time allocated by board policy. Your hand must be raised before the first public comment is read on an agenda item. After the first comment is read, there will be no additional public comments accepted. In order to be recognized to speak, you must be using a first and last name. Thank you. Now we share these same instructions in Spanish. Para hacer un comentario sobre un artículo en la agenda, se le pide al público que por favor levante su mano al presionar el botón de levantar la mano en la aplicación de Zoom o al presionar asterisco nueve por teléfono cuando lleguemos al artículo para cual usted quiera hacer su comentario. Si está llamando por teléfono, por favor presione estrella o asterisco seis para prender el micrófono de su teléfono. Cuando lleguemos a ese artículo en la agenda, un personal del distrito escolar llamará su nombre. Los comentarios serán restringidos al tiempo asignado por las normas de la Mesa Directiva. Su mano debe estar levantada antes de que el primer comentario se haga en ese artículo. Después de que el primer comentario sea leído, no se aceptarán comentarios adicionales. Para ser reconocido para comentar debe usar su nombre completo. Gracias. Superintendent Duffy, can we please have roll call? Thank you.
Yes. President Hernandez Jarvis.
Present.
Trustee Laura.
Present.
Trustee Panas. Trustee Cuevas.
Here.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Student, is our student trustee Vasquez Amala with us tonight?
Present.
Welcome. Thank you. Welcome, Trustee Phillips and Trustee, and Trustee Vasquez Amala. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Duffy, do we have a report of closed session?
We do have a report out of closed session. Tonight, in closed session, the board took action to appoint the following principals, four zero, with Mr. Phillips absent, and Daley Mallard as the new principal of Highland Elementary School, and David Ranch as the new principal of Madera Elementary School. Congratulations to those two leaders, and we look forward to working with you. That is the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. And our next item is review of number of requests to address the board for comment on individual agenda items. Since we're operating virtually and having comments via Zoom, we generally don't know the number of comments and who's going to be commenting on one. But, Mr. Walton, I wanted to check with you quickly if we have any public comments via email or any members of the community who have expressed interest in commenting on specific items.
I do know that we have one item from Don Gosney. He would like to give his committee report this evening.
Great. Thank you. The next item is agenda review and adoption. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as is or are there any suggestions or changes to be made?
President Hernandez.
Trustee Panas.
I'd like to pull C2, C4, and C5. And, Mr. Duffy, are we going to pull F4?
We're going to pull F4, and I'd also like to recommend that the reopening item be placed immediately after public comment, as we have a couple of guests for that also.
Thank you.
President Hernandez Jarvis.
Trustee Phillips.
I would like to pull C11 and C12.
Okay. So the items pulled, C2, C4, C5, C11, and C12, and F4. And with that change of moving the reopening presentation to immediately after public comment, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Panas.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Lada. Can we please have a vote, beginning with our student trustee?
Oh, yes.
Anderson.
Cuevas, yes.
Laura, yes.
Lopez, yes.
And then this Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda with the changes. Thank you, board. Our next item is the approval of minutes, two sets, one from June 24, 2020, and the other from June 30, 2020. Are there any corrections or clarification board members would like to make at this time?
Yes, President Hernandez Jarvis. So, item F1, and I believe this is from the June 10 minutes, where we were talking, or I was talking about the County Board of Education hearing in Manzanita and the Sopa. I just want to add the word alleged to those minutes before the comment about the violations, not the violations, the comment around charter schools not serving children with special needs. So it should say something like allegedly not doing that.
And, Trustee Phillips, your clarification, did you say for the June 24th or June 30th, I mean, meeting minutes?
For the June 20, I think it was June, I thought it was June 10th, but I mean, I could go back and because it's item F1 on June 10th, so maybe it was the 24th that I got them backwards. But I think it was the 10th.
Okay. And I don't think, um, let's see. So are you, so you're talking about it in reference to the, to the June 24th minutes, to comments that you made there, or the actual June 10th set of minutes?
So, no, the comments were in regard to the Sopa item, and I think that was on June 10th, but I don't have the minutes in front of me right now.
Okay, so then.
Jarvis, the Sopa item is F1 on June 24.
June 24th.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. I'm going to look at it, you know, really quick. Okay, so let me, let me note that down. Thank you. And is it item F1?
Yes, F1. Trustee Panas, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Panas, Trustee Phillips. Um, any other changes for the June 24th minutes? Is there a motion to approve those?
Just very quickly. I was present for some of the meeting before I had to leave for a family emergency on, I believe, the 20. Okay, it's there. I just thought I had stayed longer than what's identified in the minutes. It has me absent starting on C. I can't remember anymore, but I just remember it was 10 o'clock at night. So can we just have an additional note in there after item, since it looks like it has me not present? After the last item that I was present.
So, um, Trustee.
Says I voted yes on some of the C items. These were the extra items, I guess. Can we just actually have my absence identified within, like, when I had to excuse myself after what item it was?
We can do that.
We can go back to look at the recording and do that. So identify the absence after the last item that you were present for. Those are for the June 24th set of minutes as well, correct?
I know, I remember. We didn't get through much. It was a very long meeting, but I certainly want to identify the time that I actually exited for a family emergency.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other notifications to this set of minutes?
I'll move the June 24 minutes as amended.
Motion made by Trustee Panas.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Cuevas, Trustee Lada. I think I heard Trustee Cuevas before. Okay. So can we please take a vote, beginning with the student trustee?
Dow, yes.
Anderson.
Cuevas, yes.
Lada, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to approve the June 24th minutes with amendments to include the words allegedly not in the comment around, in the comment around charter schools and the special education services that Trustee Phillips made and to identify the absence of Trustee Cuevas after the last item that she was present for.
Madam Chair, I just realized that it's in there. It was just buried in the text that I just whizzed by it because it's just one sentence, but it's in there. Ms. Cuevas, excuse yourself from the meeting for the evening at 10:05 PM, so we can strike that part of the motion.
Thank you for noting that. Okay. So, the June 30, June 30th minutes. Are there any clarifications or corrections to be made by trustees? Seems like there are none. Is there a motion to approve that set of June 30th minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Panas. I second that motion. Can we please have a vote, beginning with the student trustee?
Dow, yes.
Anderson.
Cuevas, yes.
Lada, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to adopt the June 30th, 2020 minutes as they are. Thank you, board. Up next, we have WCCUSD public comment. So it is time, just reminding the public, if you want to make a comment here for something that's not on the agenda, make sure that you raise your hand by pressing asterisk nine on your phone if you're connected via phone call or by clicking on the Raise Your Hand button in the app.
President Hernandez Jarvis, we currently have five members of the public who would like to speak. I would remind the member of the public with the name Fuentes that we will not call on any member who does not have a first and last name. So if you would like to speak on this item, please log out and log back in immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. And since we have five right now, since it's less than 10, it's three minutes per speaker. And if we can please have the clock, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. The first speaker is Jamila Folds. Ms. Folds.
Good evening. Mr. Walton, I don't know if I need to speak at this time or further in the agenda. May I ask you a question? Are you going, on the agenda, does it have about the town hall, the district town hall meeting that took place on July 10?
It does not have a, there is an item about the return to school, but there's not an item about the town hall specifically.
Okay, I think, I think it may be prudent for me to speak during that one instead of this one. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Thank you very.
Thank you so much.
The next. The next public speaker is Willie Robinson. Mr. Robinson?
Yes. Good evening, President Hernandez Jarvis, board members and superintendent. I am, want to address the matter as it relates to the resolution that was passed. I don't know the number of it, but I did submit to the board, through the president, a letter from the branch, and it was regarding the matter of school safety. And in listening to that meeting that evening, I had reflections, and we did address it and sent through a letter. I could read the letter at this time, and I, and I will, unless there's some objections. Okay, so the letter reads, and it's to the Stephanie Hernandez Jarvis, Board President, and the, as Board President, and to the board members and superintendent. It says, "The Richmond branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People applauds the West Contra Costa Unified School District for its increase of 1.5 million to the budget category. Practice for African-American student support and services passed. The NAACP looks forward to the additional increase to the past budget to match the public commitment made by the Board of Education. Nevertheless, the NAACP still expects the West Contra Costa Unified School District to keep our children and grandchildren safe while they are at school. Referring, transferring the school resource officer's budget to the past budget does not relieve this West Contra Costa Unified School District of its responsibility. The NAACP fully expects the West Contra Costa Unified School District to develop and implement a comprehensive and effective safety plan to keep all students and staff safe before schools reopen. Sincerely submitted by the President Willie Robinson." Thank you, and I would like to make sure that this enters into the record of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, and thank you for reading the letter. And I do want to apologize for not having read it in advance at another one of the board meetings during public comments. So thank you again, and we will work in collaboration to, to make sure that we do have all the safety measures and the safety plan in place now. Thank you.
The next public speaker is TJ Warfield. Ms. Warfield?
Hello, me again. Kind of say I'm rather disappointed that I have to come to again about another California education code being violated specifically around gender equity. I sent an email to the Director of Equity, as well as CCing Tom Panas and you, Stephanie, and I forgot to CC you, Mr. Duffy. But this weekend, the, the summer courses were published, and there's a class of Mr. Business Kid, which the overall class was renamed to just Business Kid. But all of the, the supporting materials and the workbook and the book say Mr. Business Kid, which just reinforces the, the gender stereotypes. And the California Ed Code, was it 51500, forbidding instruction that promotes or reinforces gender stereotypes? Mr. Business Kid tells boys that boys should be in the business world and no one else should. Girls don't belong there. It reinforces with girls that they don't belong in the business worlds and they can never expect to, you know, run a business and own a business themselves. So I'm extremely disappointed that someone in the district thought that this was a good curriculum to, for the district to promote. Out of all of the other similar types of curriculums out there, that they chose Mr. Business Kid. And especially after last week that we, you know, that the DEI conversations continued, that it, just the district, you need to get your stuff together. This is getting ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
The, the next public speaker is Leslie Reckler. Ms. Reckler?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good evening to everyone. My name is Leslie Reckler, and tonight I announce my candidacy for the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board, Area 5. I'm a parent with kids enrolled and graduated from WCCUSD schools. I believe parents should guide the education of our children. Working together with teachers and administrators, we can achieve great outcomes for our kids. Many of you know me as a longtime district volunteer and fierce advocate for parent equity. I was the president of the Bayside Council of PTAs, guiding parents in their school and student advocacy. I'm secretary of the DL CAPS Committee, and along with the executive board and our wonderful members, created a collaborative and organized team that is getting results. I've been involved in district policy work and helped to write Resolution 49-1718, Establishment of a Positive School Climate, which eliminated willful defiance suspensions and established practices to improve campus conditions for our most vulnerable students. I've secured resources for this district as well. Most recently, I was an argument signer on Measure R and helped secure $575 million so that we can continue to rebuild our schools. I was part of the Hewlett Foundation Deeper Learning Grant writing, writing team that won $1.2 million for our district so that we can continue to innovate our teaching and learning practices, reaching those furthest from opportunity. Additionally, I have 20 years of professional expertise in transparent, responsible fiscal management. I am well-known and trusted by parents, district staff, teachers, and principals. The stakes for this district have never been higher. The next few years are going to be tough, and leadership matters. We need to work together to ensure that every child has an equitable, safe, healthy educational experience during this unprecedented time and that all of our schools are equipped to provide each and every student with the support they need. We are teetering on the brink of bankruptcy and suffer from a crisis of lack of public trust in the district's fiscal management. This is a time for leadership that brings our teachers, families, students, and communities together, a time for fresh ideas and solutions. I am so honored and humbled to be endorsed by the United Teachers of Richmond, the West County Labor Coalition, Teamsters 856, Janet Ableson, Mayor of El Cerrito, Sitting Board Member Consuela Lara, and many others. Fresh energy, new ideas, collaborative leadership. Visit my website, LeslieforWCCUSD, to learn more. Parent-driven, student-focused. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Everett Fuentes, and at this point, I will not, we will not accept any more raised hands for a public comment. Everett Fuentes?
Yes, hi. My name is Everett Fuentes. I am thankful for the platform that you guys have provided me. I'm a parent of a elementary school student at Washington Elementary, and I've been so far attending the last board meetings in regards to the opening of schools for this fall. And I, you know, heard a lot about the hybrid system and a lot of data in regards to kids and, and the thoughts of parents and the confusions and, and the worries that we parents have. But one thing I haven't heard the board talk about at all are basically how in the world are we going to keep our, our schools clean and sanitized? And I asked this, this question to the board because even before COVID-19 started, and we knew about it, my son's school had hygiene problems. We brought this to the attention of the principal at that point in time, and it took maybe a month before something was done. And even after that particular task was put in place, we literally saw that it couldn't be 100% effective. Again, I've heard a lot of, a lot of other worries about books and virtual classes and things like that, but with the kids that have to go to school and be present with teachers. I think it's very important for the board to highlight exactly what their plan is in regards to that. The other thing that I want to bring to your attention as well is that there's a lot of talk right now about kids not being vulnerable to this disease. And I completely agree with that, but I think we've known that from the very beginning when this came out, that kids were not as vulnerable as older adults and the elderly. And that's, and right now, I think that's, the school board is missing the point as far as opening up so early when numbers are going backwards instead of improving. We all know, again, like I said, that the kids are not vulnerable, but it is from kids to parents to the elderly that it spreads. And so with that said, I'd like the board to really, really consider showing parents what the plan is in place to, to show, insistently show that schools are being kept clean with the limited staff that we have already had and how we can move forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walton? Is there another public speaker?
Sorry, that's my, my apologies. I was on mute. The last public comment is Don Gosney, and, Mr. Gosney, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that you were allowed to use public dollars to allow people to campaign. And this has nothing to do with Ms. Reckler, but to have every candidate get up on and use our publicly funded Zoom meetings to do their campaigning, I always thought that was a contradiction and not allowed. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we need to check into it, and if it's true, we need to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Gosney. Thank you, Mr. Gosney, for bringing that to our attention. We'll look into it and we'll follow up. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, and thank you to each member of the community who shared their input with us tonight. Since we just wrapped up public comment, that leads us to our next item, discussion item one, framework to open schools on August 17, 2020.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, board members, community staff. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about our framework to reopen schools. Many of our community had a chance to hear about this framework at our town hall on Friday. And that was attended by over 3,000 people between the town hall and the Facebook Live. And I apologize for folks who couldn't get into the Zoom, but were able to get into Facebook Live. So I'm going to share some similar content and items as we shared at that meeting, but it's going to be more condensed. So there was a slide deck attached to the agenda originally that's very comprehensive. And then I will be sharing a number of slides that is is a bit slimmer this evening, but mostly taken from that original deck. We've also had a request from Trustee Phillips to invite John Joya, who represents us on the county board, and also a member of county health, to share with us. And we were able to have that at our Friday Town Hall. And really happy to see our Representative Joya here this evening, and thank him for joining us, and also Louise McNitt, who is from our county health department. And so before I go into my presentation, I wanted to just welcome them and ask them to just share a little bit for our community, a little bit more of what's going on health-wise, both in our immediate community of West County, the county also, and any sort of other relevant pieces of information that we need to know. This is information that's helping to shape our decisions. I get a chance with the county health team at our county superintendent's meetings to listen to them, to hear what they're sharing, to get timely and pertinent information. So it's been a a great partnership all the way through as everyone's trying to answer very difficult questions. So I am going to turn it over to Mr. Joya and Ms. McNitt to frame a little bit about what's happening health-wise, and then I'll get into our reopening framework.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy, and good evening, board members. We will be brief because we know you have a a a long longer presentation and want to hear from the public. So I just want to start off and thank Board Member Phillips for inviting us, and thank the whole board for for having us talk during these very challenging times. We know that you all are under a lot of pressure, as are all the families that in the district. So I want to start by just thanking the partnership that Contra Costa County has with the school district, because the most recent test site that we opened in Richmond is at Kennedy High School, which is great. It's a it's being fully utilized. Our goal has been to increase testing. In fact, the response has been so good that it's, and you'll hear this more from the health officer, a number of issues regarding problems with with the the testing kits statewide, as well as the large number of people who are seeking to get tested have resulted in delays in getting test results, which hopefully will get fixed soon statewide. The county has spent over $100 million since the start of the pandemic to sort of address this in many ways, from health to social services, to renting 600 hotel rooms, to move homeless individuals, to avoid outbreaks. There is a a alternate care facility, as some of you know, set up in Richmond at the Ford Building at the Crane Way to handle 250 beds if that is needed. And you'll hear more from the health officer that the hospitalizations, percent of people testing positive, and the number of cases is going in the wrong direction. Those are all increasing. This is happening statewide, which is why the county delayed some of the reopening plans that it had and had to reverse a couple of the recent reopenings. And the governor has done the same statewide. And ultimately, it's going to take a while to turn the the course on this, and the health officer will explain that. And so your action to do distance learning is 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 a prudent one with regard to protecting the interest of of the health and safety of families. How you best do that is obviously a determination you're all going to make. And one of the things we are also really focused on is the the large number of cases in the Latinx community. The Latinx community is about 50 to 55% of the cases where we have data countywide is in that community, and that's double their rate of the population. That is also true in Richmond and San Pablo. And I was just on a call today with a number of community leaders and our health department to really work on a strategy with regard to outreach and prevention and care in the Latinx community. And I know the school district has offered assistance in that area, to the extent we may need to communicate with families and parents, and we appreciate that. So I I will stop at that, and I'm going to introduce Dr. Louise McNitt, who is our deputy health officer, who's going to talk a bit more about where things are headed from a health standpoint.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Joya. I think you gave a really good summary already. So I'll just highlight a couple of things. I think, as you're all aware, the cases have been going up in the county as they have been in California and in many other parts of the country. One of the big challenges that presents to us with the amount of testing resources that we have right now is it makes it longer for people to get test results. And the longer it takes for people to get test results, the more difficult it is to isolate people who are sick and quarantine the people who've been exposed. So like Mr. Joya said, it's, I think it makes the decision to do distance learning a very reasonable one, because it does hinder our ability to do very aggressive contact tracing and contact investigation if we're having to wait so long for test results to come back. The number of cases has definitely gone up, you know, since the end of June. Luckily, it seems to be not increasing very dramatically. We've had probably about 50 to 200 cases a day over the past couple of weeks, and our percent positivity rate has increased also, but is remaining steady about 8%. Really, the important thing, I think, for students and staff who are members of your school community is to remember the prevention messages. I think Dr. Rohan, who's probably been with you previously, says it very nicely and succinctly, space, face, hands, home. So remember to maintain six-foot distancing, cover your face when you're out in public, frequent hand washing, and staying home when you're sick. I'd also like to add to that, just based on the types of cases that we've seen recently and the settings where we've seen outbreaks occur, is for people to keep in mind that they need to follow these practices anytime they're outside of their home and interacting with people who are not their household members. So we've seen situations where at religious gatherings or gatherings of extended family that outbreaks have occurred. And we really want to reinforce that these measures measures need to be followed at all times when you're not when you're outside of your household. And considering the long time that it's taking for test results to come back, people who are sick need to stay home. And if you have family members who are sick and you don't have a test result yet, or if you can't get a test, to be very careful about, you know, staying home as much as you can, and also following the social distance and face covering guidelines, because we we know with this virus that even people who don't have symptoms are able to transmit it. So I think those are the main things that I wanted to share, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for the overview. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both Mr. Joya and and Dr. McNitt. And we hope to be able to have you back again, and as we get closer to school. Oops, sorry, my video has not started. Sorry, I didn't realize that. As as we get closer to school, to have you back and to continue to, you know, help inform what we do. So thank you for giving us a little bit of an overview of where we are. And I'm going to just dive into our presentation. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to share more about how we are working to reopen our schools. Our first day of school is August 17, and that is the date we are working towards. So I think we all know this, that we are not going to be opening school as we know it, as you know it, and we are going to be launching a distance learning model with a phased start to in-school instruction. So that is really what we want the community to be aware of today. And now that on August 17, we are starting with a distance learning model, and we will begin to phase in students in a Phase 2 when we believe that we are ready. And I'll be talking about that through our presentation. We do want schools to be open, and we really need for schools to be open. But we've got to do that safely for all students and employees. We know that remote learning, distance learning is not an equal substitute, not an equal substitute for many of our most struggling students. So we really do want our schools open, but we just do not believe we can do that yet. So what have we been doing? So we've been doing a lot of strategic listening from the time we ended school, and we obviously did a lot of strategic listening through school. And we then moved into a space where we began to conceptualize this framework, and that's what we're calling it, a framework, because the actual day-to-day plan, minute-to-minute plan, hasn't been fully fleshed out or finished. And I'll be talking about that later, but it is a framework. And so here we are, sharing that framework with the board, with the community, where we're going. And then we spend the next, you know, four to five weeks filling in a lot of the details, and I'll talk about that. We give our plan, our framework, to the county with as much detail as we'll have on Monday, and then we'll continue forward. So our aim was to create a framework that was flexible, adaptable, and nimble, enabling us to be able to do online learning, knowing that conditions are constantly changing. Could we come in? Could we go back home? Could we come in? Could we go back home? Could we have some kids in, some kids home? Flexible, adaptable, and nimble. And that's what we've been working on. We have a set of core values and guiding principles that are in front of you. And our key is to make decisions that serve to support the safety of students, strengthen social emotional health, promote equity, overcome the digital divide, adequately feed our students, create a culture of connectivity, provide families with options, inform our stakeholders, and provide the proper PD to staff and parents. So we have been triangulating these input streams. We've had a task force made up of some 50 members with smaller working groups underneath. We've done surveys, stakeholder views. We've done so many different ways to get input, even last week's town hall. We had a lot of input from the thought exchange there. And so that's how we've been triangulating this, and then working back through our cabinet team to be able to put this all together. So the biggest takeaways from all the strategic listening from our students, from our teachers, from our community, has been safety first. Then we've heard, keep a focus on equity, avoid student learning loss, be consistent, predictable, proactive in communication. I'm going to talk about that later in terms of creating a very consistent schedule for students and families, consistent in applying and describing the instructional model, focus on social, social and emotional learning, and, oops, sorry, I'm covering that. Sorry. And grading and assessment, sorry, folks, should have options for pass, no pass, and A to F. And I know many of our students are talking about that right now with each other about what they would like to see in terms of a grading system. Further takeaways are making sure that relevant curriculum and PD is focused on anti-racism, culturally responsive pedagogy, and relevancy in classes. So we know now is an incredible time in our country where social movements are happening across many states and in our community, and we want to make sure that students have time to talk about that, and teachers have time to work through that in their classes and in their training. We've heard about specific groups like special education and English language learner working groups to create optimal distance learning components of the plan for these very special groups. We heard, create uniformity in technology platforms. So really, for families, making sure and students making sure there's consistency, they have one platform that they can use while teachers are able to have the flexibility with their apps, that training and PD is tailored to the needs of parents and teachers, so that we give appropriate training to our parents so they understand, and that we really engage in a willingness to make it work. So our key question to answer was, could we create a blended model using online instructional delivery, both synchronous and asynchronous, with some in-school instructional support that it can accommodate stay-at-home learners and serve high-need students and families? So to answer that question, we saw four options. The first option was that all our schools would reopen. The second option was that all our schools would be closed with 100% distance learning. The third option was a hybrid model where students would split time in school and distance learning, something like half the students in the AM, half in the PM, or half the students on Monday, Tuesday, the other half on Wednesday, Thursday. The option that we are choosing is a fourth option, which is an online option with student support hubs. So this is a blended instructional approach where all students use distance learning. All students begin with distance learning, and we begin to phase in some high-priority students once we understand the capacity we have to be able to serve them, and once we define the exact safety conditions that need to be in place for anybody to come into our buildings. So as you see here, we are thinking about this in terms of phases. Phase 1 is distance learning for every student. Phase 2 is a tiered system where certain high-need students, who we believe will not be as successful in distance Who we believe will not be as successful in distance learning as other students, Will come in and be our first group that we take care of inside the school buildings. And we would call these hubs, because they may not look like your traditional classrooms With the same students in different grade levels. Then we would look at phase three and phase four, where we would begin to bring back more students. And then we would begin to bring back all of our students. But right now, August 17th, we are starting with phase one. If we can get to some phase two, we may do that. And I'll talk a little bit about what might trigger that. You'll see the terms health trigger and the capacity trigger, what might trigger us to be able to do it. So this is an idea of a hub where, once we're ready to be able to bring some students back, We look at those with very significant needs, wellness, technology, English language learners, Special education, nutrition, attendance, academic needs, et cetera, that we're able to bring back. So you see here another diagram of what this looks like. Distance learning on the top, students are learning at home. The bulk of our students are learning at home. And then we have some student support hubs where we can bring our students back. How does it work? Again, all instruction is delivered through distance learning. The classroom is with the teacher. The teachers can either be at home or in the classroom with limited high-need students. And we'll talk about again what triggers the ability for any staff to come into a classroom. And students are admitted to these hubs with all of the social distancing standards in place. We have to look at our capacity, how many staff members, whether that's certificated staff or others, Could come in and support us inside of the buildings. A little bit more about it means that, again, we look at our capacity. And we also are gonna have to look at workforce demands. We will have to think about need for coordinated intervention for personnel for high-need students. And we want to make sure that anybody who's in those hubs or in those buildings is really qualified. And of course, we would collaborate with our unions to reach consensus and resolve staffing and workload issues. What we see here is that most of our stakeholders favor distance learning. But before I go there, if we could go back one slide. The last bullet that I have here is really key. We have four major labor unions in our district. And they represent the bulk of the employees in our district. And they do an amazing job making sure everybody is well taken care of and well represented. And we collaborate with them. And the key will be how we collaborate and work together going forward to make sure we're all on the same page. At our last meeting, our last town hall, we had the opportunity hear from parents, community, and students. And tonight, I wanted us to be able to hear from our largest labor union, the United Teachers of Richmond. And to be able to hear just a minute from their new president, Marissa Glidden, On how we are working together, moving forward to create this collaborative agreement to get us where we need to go. The teachers did an amazing job of pivoting super fast in the fall. We know it wasn't perfect, and we learned a ton. But they did an amazing job of creating some incredible classrooms for our kids. And we heard about all of the successes, and we heard about some places we could do better. So I thank all of our teachers. And I'll turn it over to Marissa, if she's on with us, for a couple of minutes To just share a little bit about how we're going to collaborate and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. As Mr. Duffy said, I'm Marissa Glidden. I am the president of United Teachers of Richmond, representing 1,700 educators in our district. I want to echo what Mr. Duffy said and emphasize the extraordinary work That our educators did during this unprecedented crisis. Not only did educators flip their entire classrooms, but they also were dealing with their own personal challenges. Teachers go to school for years to learn how to be experts in the classroom. And overnight, they were asked to learn how to do that online to serve their students. Many educators also handed out food to make sure our students were well-fed. They taught each other and collaborated to figure out the best online learning tools. They spent tons of time talking to families, coordinating with parents, And serving the social and emotional needs of their children. So I really want to start by saying thank you to our educators for serving our community during this difficult time. I also want to emphasize a few things educators have said that they want to emphasize moving forward. One, they want to emphasize health and safety. They appreciate the district's plan to emphasize health and safety. They also want to echo that and say that the health and safety of our students, Our educators, our communities, and our families should always be the most important thing when we are making decisions. Number two, our educators want to emphasize equity. We serve a very diverse district with lots of different needs and challenges. We must ensure the safety of our most vulnerable educators and our most vulnerable students. It must be safe for them as well. And third, our teachers want to emphasize learning and professional development. They are so eager to work to become experts at this. They are the professionals when it comes to education And are looking forward to their voice being heard as they move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy, I don't know if everybody else can hear you, but I just want to confirm with folks if they cannot hear Mr. Duffy either.
No, we cannot hear.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Is this connection, is he still in the meeting?
I lost connection for a minute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't get to see Marissa in there, so thank you very much. So we can bring that back up. Right, so after we did the town hall on Friday, We polled folks, and what we found out was a majority, 53%, Of the almost 1,600 poll takers at the town hall said distance learning will work for them. 6% said absolutely not. And then a group of folks somewhere in the middle. So we believe that the community, at the end of the day, is behind this move to start in distance learning. And although I spent a lot of time talking about what those hubs would look like, Those hubs only go into effect when we believe that it is absolutely safe enough To bring staff and students together. So now what do we do? We're shifting from the input phase to the implementation phase. So we've sunsetted our task force. And we are moving into small implementation teams with smaller membership So we can start hammering out the details. We'll drill into the key components of the draft plan and framework submitted And work through fleshing all of those out. And we'll negotiate and talk with our labor organizations and hope to have those agreements done by August 1st. So key to opening school And to making all of our stakeholders and community feel comfortable with what we're doing Is creating the framework for the instructional week. We've heard from multiple stakeholders what they want in that week, What this instructional model should look like. And that's where we will be working with our unions to build that collaboratively. We know inside of that framework, we need to have direct instruction. We need to have some type of homeroom or advisory or connection To our students for social emotional learning and personalization. We need professional development time for staff. That's both professional development around technology, content, academics. And we need time for professional learning around race, equity, diversity, et cetera. We want to make sure our staff has daily planning time. And we want to make sure there's office hours for one-to-one interaction for any student who needs it. We want to limit the number of classes taken on a daily basis. And we want our assignments linked to a common platform with flexibility. And we want to have virtual forums for student-to-student interaction. So we want to make sure that it's not just time with adults, But we actually build time for students to have with each other. So these have been some of the key takeaways that we have heard in our listening sessions That will get built into what a consistent week looks like. Additionally, we've got to build in social opportunities for clubs, athletics, Training and support for parents, time to contact counselors, And time to discuss issues of race, equity, diversity, and inclusivity with students and staff. Again, saying the same thing in a little bit more of a detailed way. We want to make sure we have clarity in this plan around direct instruction daily That would combine asynchronous and synchronous teaching. That's both around the academic content and social emotional development. We want to make sure there's ample time for teacher professional learning. We want to make sure there is ample daily planning time to support lesson design. This is a new world that we're entering. So teachers and staff really need that time to make sure what they're delivering is high-quality and excellent. And again, on the office hours, really making sure that students have an opportunity To talk in small groups or one-to-one with their instructors To make sure things are clarified for them, anything that they don't understand, And just making sure there's connection with adults. We want to limit the number of classes, as I said, that students take in a normal day. We don't feel it's realistic to simply mimic a six or seven-period schedule for students online. So we'll find exactly what the right quantity is and create a schedule that reflects that. We know many of our middle and high schools are looking at either a three, What's called a three-by-three or four-by-four block, Where students would take three or four classes each day, But not the traditional six or seven that they would do in person. We have heard loud and clear that students especially would like their assignments linked on a common platform. So whether we're all using the Google Classroom, we're all using CSO, That there's some common platform where teachers and students are able to exchange information, assignments, et cetera, While teachers and other staff have the flexibility to use many different apps within their instruction. Again, really figuring out how to build a student-to-student time, Whether that's clubs, whether that's, you know, time to Government, et cetera. And we're looking at dramatically focusing the first weeks of school On student interaction, social emotional learning, and determining where students are academically. So we do not intend day one to start hardcore content. We want to make sure everybody's okay, we know where they're at, we've checked in with them, we're building community, We're seeing what students need, and we're diagnosing them academically. Phase one, again, distance learning, details of this. Our distance learning program needs to be finalized through Have to stand and have what that week looks like. Everybody's got to agree, and I think we have enough data and enough collaboration that we can do that. Multiple negotiations in the next two weeks. And the goals to work towards completing our necessary MOUs, Which are Memorandums of Understanding, which would reflect these agreements, And announce the format the week of August 1st, if not sooner. This will allow parents to know what the schedule is clearly And allow us to provide the appropriate staff development to teachers. I can tell you, as a parent myself and my wife, who's a teacher, We are eager to know this schedule for our two kids So we can start to build around and plan around when our kids' classes are. And that helps us build our schedule of work, et cetera. So it's, I understand it both as superintendent, and I really understand it as a parent, the need for that consistency. Phase two, this idea of returning to in-school learning at the student support hubs. This is very, very Units to negotiate the conditions that will be necessary to begin implementing possible phase-two options. Again, we'd call that a trigger. What are the conditions that would trigger the allowance of students back into the buildings? What are the health Have to be in place? We heard a caller earlier today say, can we see this deep cleaned every day, et cetera? We need to make sure we're all on the same page about what needs to be in place, What we're gonna do as a team and a staff, and what the condition That is absolutely key, right? So I don't, I won't read any more text on there. But just again, reiterating that we will have a working agreement That we will make plenty transparent about what has to be in place In order for people to come back into the buildings. How are we thinking about back to school? And what's our real orientation toward back to school? So traditionally, we've done a back-to-school night, you know, a few weeks into the school year. We're gonna work to do that much earlier and hopefully be able to do that before school starts So we can give as many families and students and others As much needed information about how we're gonna do our work, You know, what the technology is gonna look like, what the expectations. When we think about going back to school, we're focused deeply on social emotional learning. Really making sure our students are doing okay socially, emotionally, their mental health is in good shape. We're thinking a lot about equity and how to make sure the students farthest away from opportunity are most supported. We're thinking a lot about relationships. And we're thinking a lot about our distance learning methods. Not necessarily the curriculum content immediately, but as we get back to school, this is how we're thinking. We're wanting to make sure we're troubleshooting problem areas and really being agile to make the adjustments That we're screening and evaluating our student needs. That we're creating student engagement activities for our students to feel excited about coming back to school, Proud to be back to school, feeling really good about Environment, really training for staff and parents on distance learning. So again, we have a framework. The framework is a phase-one framework that starts us with distance learning. And only when we're ready, moving into phase two. And then from there, working out, sorry, and not from there, But to get there, working out the details of phase one, what the instructional week looks like, and phase two. And I'm told my internet's a little spotty, but I'm gonna try to change that up While we, I think, take public comment and then go into our questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. And so before we have a board discussion, we're going to have public comment and hear from members of the public. So again, it would remind people in the audience to make sure that you are using a first name and a last name And that you put, your hand raised, and you click on the button if you're using the Zoom app, Or if you're calling in by phone, that you dial asterisk nine. And then when you're called to unmute by pressing asterisk six. And we do have translation available, so if you need to have translation for I don't see it actually right here. Mr. Duffy, can you confirm that we have the translation button available?
Yes, we do have the translation button available, President Hernandez Jarvis.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Walton. Thank you. So we can begin with public comment.
My apologies, go ahead.
No worries, thank you. Sorry for interrupting. So if there's more than 10 public speakers, it'll be two minutes. If there's more than 15 public speakers, it will be one minute per speaker.
We currently have 11 public speakers with their hands raised at this time.
Thank you. So two minutes, please.
The first public speaker is Claudia Burgos. Ms. Burgos?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Claudia Burgos. I'm the Director of Legislative Affairs and Community Relations at AC Transit. As we all work through these really difficult times, all public agencies, including AC Transit, have been impacted by the pandemic. Since the shelter-in-place order went into effect, we've seen ridership reductions of over 70%. We've implemented measures to protect the safety of both our operators and our riders, which includes not collecting fares since back in March, which has resulted in monthly revenue reductions of about $5 million a month. And so I wanted to just deliver to the Board of Trustees and also to the families that are tuning into tonight's meeting that AC Transit does have some measures that are in place, and we expect that those will still be in place when the new school year begins. And it's really important for administrators and families to be aware. The first is that we do have social distancing requirements onboard our buses, which results in very reduced passenger limits. We also require all riders to wear masks. And then the third is that the bus schedules for the upcoming school year have already been set, and they closely monitor last year's school schedules. The next opportunity to make changes is going to be in December. So it's really important that, as decisions are made in terms of what the schedule is going to look like for the next school year, that the transportation options are taken into consideration. So I want to just elaborate a little bit more on the social distancing limits. We are only able to carry 10 passengers on a standard 40-foot bus and 16 passengers on a 60, on the longer 60-foot articulated buses. So anybody who has seen buses with students, you know that we carry more than that. So I just wanted to share that message with the leadership and the families to take into consideration as you move into your plans for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burgos. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Jamila Foltz, Ms. Foltz.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jamila Smith Foltz. I'm a veteran teacher who has been in education for over 15 years. I was one of the few stakeholders that got the golden ticket and was able to attend the Zoom District Town Hall hosted by the district on July 10. I was so excited once I got in because I knew I could not only bring my concerns to light, but the shared concerns of others. Sadly, this did not happen. I would like to take just a moment to provide the Board with a quick summary of points of growth that I hope that you, as a Board, would take back to district leads. First, being mindful of wording. The district advertised the July 10th event as a town hall. The dictionary defines a town hall as an event at which politicians or public officials answer questions from members of the public. This definition was not met on July 10. Stakeholders did not have the opportunity to ask questions. What parents, guardians, teachers, administrators, and students got was a presentation. Second, be sure that all voices are represented at the decision-making table. This is the basic requirement for equity. I did not see a teacher rep on the panel. I also did not see student representation from the schools located in Ward 1. Ward on the panel, Ward 1 encompasses Hercules, Pinot, and parts of Richmond. All voices must be heard and all experience is valued. Finally, please be committed to putting and keeping the power with the people. Keep the district accountable to the people they are charged to represent. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Bobby Davis. Mr. Davis? Bobby Davis, you can unmute. We will try to come back to Bobby Davis. The next speaker is Heather Mann.
Hello, my name is Heather Mann, and I am a teacher with the district. And I wanted to just address the move into the Phase Two with the hubs. I'm also the mother of two special-needs children and staunchly anti-racist educator. And I have some very serious concerns that following the model of going to the hub, although I know it is being done with the best intentions in the world, we will end up with the most demographically-challenged students being our big test group that is the one that's being used kind of as the test for, to see what happens. There as, and I don't want them to be our science project. And every time I think about these hubs, I imagine them being our science project, and it's really unsettling for me. So I just really need to put it out there, and I wonder if we had people auditing us and seeing what we were doing from a scientific perspective, this would not be approved. So I really just want to make sure ethically that we're being conscientious in our decisions that we're making. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Estella Depas, Mr. Pass. Mr. Pass, you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Good evening, President Hernandez Jarvis, Board members and staff. My name is Estella Depas. I'm the School Site Council Chairperson for Hercules High School. I've been listening to many parents this past few days after the return to School Town Hall, and many welcome the project framework that was provided, providing the traceability, as I've urged this district to do, has put our community at ease on the same path so that we know where we're heading and we've got a way to get there. I think parents are now very hungry to see our specifics so that they can react and make their own plans and make their own decisions so they can move their lives forward. I'm also hearing a lot of questions around how, what, and when. So the implementation plan, Mr. Duffy, that you are talking about is definitely something that they are really, really waiting to hear. Before we go to that plan, though, I'm urging you to think about risk management strategies. Here's why. Please remember this number, it's 640. According to the CDE data quest, we have got 32,143 students enrolled in West Coast across the Unified School District. On Friday, you said approximately 25%, which is 8,035, will probably be using the, be using the hubs. According to Dr. Vada Krishnan, we have in West County an A to 100 ratio. Doing the math, we have got a potential of 640 of our community members, teachers, staff, and students who might actually get infected. Please, please, this is a sobering number. We need to manage risks, we need to have airtight mitigations, and we need to have measurable, managed, and communicated information about how we're proceeding. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Eanad Burrell.
Good evening, Board members. I am Eanad Burrell, and I wanted to bring to Superintendent Duffy's attention. There was a report that you shared a couple, maybe about a month ago, and you mentioned that over 750 students were not accounted for during the distance learning between March and the end of the school year. And looking at the presentation, I don't see any accountability for that. How are they being brought along? Were they being brought along? Why did, it was just crickets. No one heard from 753 students. So while there is a plan to go into distance learning again, what's going to happen with that chasm? Is that chasm going to grow? Is that gap going to get wider? Are those individuals given attention? I did remember you sharing that there would be some early intervention for those who were not connected but not sure where that lands. 753 is a very, very large number of students to be not accounted for, never checked in. And I do know that upcoming, I believe after this, there's a Digital Divide presentation, but that is something extremely concerning. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening, Board members and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Ford Elementary. And I'm here to advocate and to reiterate that as a district, we cannot put our students, we cannot put our educators and our families at risk. Our communities are facing a surging health crisis as COVID-19 rates have skyrocketed in the recent weeks. We cannot put our students, families, or our school staff at risk by returning to in-person teaching. The safest and most educationally-enriching return to teaching and learning is essential for the well-being of our school communities. And I would really like to echo what Ms. Mann said earlier about our most vulnerable students are English language learners, are sped students who might be posed at a higher risk during the implementation of the Phase Two. I would also urge for your consideration that we must meet the following public health and school safety conditions before bringing our school communities back together in person. Some public health conditions to consider is that we should have a low level of COVID-19 community spread, including sharply reduced cases and hospitalizations for at least 14 days in our county. Another one is that we should have frequent testing for students, parents, and educators with a strong contact tracing program for our schools. And for school safety conditions, we need to have a layered defense against COVID-19 with full implementation of proven prevention measures, including six-feet distancing, reduced number of contacts, adequate ventilation, face coverings, personal protective equipment, hand washing, cleaning, symptom screening, and protection for all of those who are at greater risk. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Justin Trujillo.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Justin Trujillo. I am an upcoming junior at Pinot Valley High School. And I am, this whole distance learning model, I think that there should be, or I haven't seen much representation of how arts education and VAPA will be implemented. Previously, when we had distance learning from March until June, it, the curriculum, the way the curriculum was taught wasn't very, it just obviously wasn't the same with being in person. For example, you know, music classes, you can't perform as a group, or pottery, or it's just, it wasn't the same. And with this new blended model, I think that there should be, may possibly be able to have small groups of students come in and, you know, do art or even like outdoor music rehearsals where distance learning or social distancing can be enforced. Even if this isn't immediately, when we start school, I think that there should be some form of arts education in school. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Kelly Hardy.
Good evening, can I be heard?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm Kelly Hardy. I'm the parent of a rising third grader. I emailed a letter with some recommendations about distance learning to the Board and the Superintendent yesterday. It was signed by 350 other West Contra Costa Unified parents. I understand that there's an amazing amount of issues that everyone's dealing with right now, but I urge you to move faster to get to the detailed plan. We parents really need those details in order to be able to care for our kids as best we can, such as what the triggers are for moving to different phases, what distance learning is really going to look like, and how it's going to work better. It worked for very few kids in the spring, and my, my kid had a fantastic teacher for second grade, and I know that teachers were working like crazy. We're working overtime, not faulting teachers. I'm just saying that we need to make sure that this works for lots of kids, not just a few. I would note that teachers and the district are represented in these negotiations to hammer out these final details, but parents and students are really not represented. I know that many of, many of the teachers and the district staff are parents, but really need you to think about the impacts and think about things like getting families the class assignments, which class their kid's going to be in earlier. We usually get them, you know, the weekend before school opens, and if we get them earlier, we may be able to make arrangements with neighbors. Thanks for moving forward towards more details, and I really appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Andrea Garcia Perez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I would just like to echo to please include a teacher in your town meeting. I saw that there was no teachers on the Friday meeting, so please include one next time. And since we are going to do the model of kids staying in their homes, I do have some propositions. There are parents who do not have means to get the meals for the kids in the pickup, such as they don't have means of transportation. I would really like if there's a survey to provide them to know where can they have possibly like a meal-on-wheels type of situation in which for those parents who can't have transportation, if you can provide that meal for them. Now, the other thing is that I did hear about the Latinx community having the highest cases in COVID. They are one of the communities who are considered essential workers. I think that in order for them to be, excuse me, treated equitably, economically, sometimes they go to work sick because they don't have that economic surplus that they, that other people may need. So if you, if there's a way to help them economically, that would be very good for that community. Thank you so much and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Gerson. Mr. Gerson?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Board members. I am a 19-year veteran of the school district, and I am a parent of a child as well. So that, of course, means that having this distance learning plan is very helpful so that I can be able to have my child get the help that he needs. I would like to say a couple things. One is, some have been mentioned already, like the, about the town hall, so I'm not going to, not going to keep hammering that home. I do want to say that worker, we need to work with companies and localities to help with flexibility so that, that our families can have their children at home and not have to worry about childcare. Because, so we, as, since we do have so many that may be essential workers. Also, I would like to say that I don't recall hearing in the meeting on Friday much about mask use. It's possible that I'm forgetting certain details. But if that was, if that was not discussed on Friday, it would be helpful to really have that idea nailed down as well because that is another really important part of containing the virus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Zulon Harrison. Ms. Harrison?
Good evening, Board. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you for having curriculums in our school. Good to hear that parents say that we have curriculums that celebrate all children in our school. So thank you for doing that. That's very important to me to have little black boys celebrated that have businesses. I like that. And I also want to say, my concern is, when we re-enter back into school, what I didn't see is how the communication with parents that have special needs and how that's going to look. And really, I just want more information on the children that have been left out. A lot of black students haven't been engaged in the district before the pandemic, and now that the pandemic has happened, their, their, their parents and the students that haven't been engaged, I want to ensure with asset and with meeting with Duffy, that we continue to address this issue because it's not come to a set method that we're going to ensure that all children are educated and have equity and equal education. So those children are very important, that we get information on how they're doing, where they're at, and what we need to do to ensure that this continues, the engagement continues, not just for an answer, but to continue for we can get the outcome we want to close the achievement gap. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final public comment is from Jennifer Beck, Ms., Jennifer Peck. Ms. Peck?
Thank you. So I wanted to actually build on the comments of Justin, the student from Pinole Valley who spoke a little earlier around developing creative options for bringing small groups of kids together in safe ways per county health guidelines, where circumstances really demand it. And I'm hoping that the district is going to consider, in the early phases of this, putting together protocols for the option of bringing small groups of kids together with teachers or in peer groups, in small groups, in the same way that we're seeing our city park and rec departments do this. I have seen it in our parks around El Cerrito all summer long, where they have small groups of kids in pods. It's all in very close partnership with the county health agency. I'm a parent at El Cerrito High School. I am really witnessing the damaging effects of the social isolation. I think we all really recognize also the challenges of effective teaching and learning in this environment. As a parent, I really understand the need to start school in an all-virtual format, and I support that decision. But I do think there should be options. If teachers choose and want to bring small groups of kids together, parents would have to agree and opt in on potentially a weekly basis or some kind of periodic basis in partnership with our city parks. I think there's lots of parent and community volunteers who would help on the logistics of this. I think it could be a very good solution in the interim while we wait for it to be safe to bring everybody back. So thank you for all of your work. Mr. Duffy, I really appreciated the presentation earlier. It was much more effective coming from you than it was from the consultant last week. It was much more clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, and thank you to each member of the community who share their input with us for this item. So we will begin our discussion, and I would request, if we can go in this order, Student Trustee Vasquez Simula, Trustee Panas, Trustee Cuevas, Trustee Phillips, Trustee Lara, and then myself at the end. And if Student Trustee Vasquez Simula wants to go last, that's completely fine, too. It's up to you.
Thank you, President Ananas Jarvis. I can go first.
Great, thank you.
Um, yeah, so I just want to say thank you to everybody who's been on the task force, who's been helping with that. And thank you to, yeah, thank you to Mr. Duffy, to everybody who's also been really good, including me as well. As I've said before, I feel really strongly that students should be involved in all of this, especially high school students. This is for us, and we're not stupid. So I think it's really important that we've, that we do that, and that we've been doing that. So thank you to all of you guys for doing that. One thing that students are working on right now, are, or one thing that we've been really discussing a lot lately, has been grading and how that's going to happen. I think that's, that's, that's really important to us as students right now, especially ones who are about to go off to college soon. I think, because we're, we're thinking about what's next for us, right? Our next phase. And all of this is really important for us to, for us to really understand what's happening with our grades, because it's going to help determine what we're going to do later on, right? And so, and with the students, what the, the task force right now really wants is a little bit more time to discuss grading, and how that will be done with other students, students of color, and people with other backgrounds, because right now, it's majority, it's pretty much, it's majority white and majority from El Cerrito High School, because I go there. So I know more people from there. So we're trying to find ways to include more people from different background, so that we can make sure that the grading system that we talk about and that we want fits everybody the best. And so that's what the biggest thing that we're doing. And I'm just hoping that, even though it may take a little bit of time, that we have time to, or that we give like the other students enough space to really think about that, but not only just think about it, but actually implement maybe some of the things that they're talking about. Because I would hate for him, to us, just to talk about it, and then go to the adults and be like, and the adults be like, oh, actually, we've already, we already know what we're going to do, we've already decided, without the students. So that's what we're working on right now. And so, yeah, again, thank you to everybody who's been helping out. Thank you to everybody who supports youth in all of this. Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you, Student Trustee Vasquez Simula, for your input and for bringing up that we need to continue to work and focus on grading with a student voice at the center of it. Thank you. Um, Trustee Panas?
Thank you, President Ananas Jarvis. I'd like to thank the staff, Mr. Duffy, for your presentation. Certainly like to thank Mr. Joy and Ms. Magnette for their comments this evening, and Trustee Vasquez Simula, and the students that are doing a lot of work. And I've been talking to them a lot about how that goes. And they are just doing an enormous amount of work, and I really appreciate what they've done. And I'll just throw in regarding the grading, like this is so important. I think we need student input here. Another option the students might want to consider is like a pass slash never took the class option. So I want to thank Mr. Duffy very much for your focus on social emotional learning. We can't forget about that. Like, it just seems like kids are sinking deeper and deeper into isolation, spending more and more time on their devices, and just suffering from the lack of social interaction that we have. So our focus on that is really important. It's imperative that the safety of our students drive our decisions, and our families are really worried that they still don't know what the fall looks like. And I know Mr. Duffy's trying to get there as fast as he can. But, you know, everyone is saying, the sooner we can get a plan in place, the better. And there just brings them more, every day that we don't have a plan, not that we're going to have one tomorrow, it's just more stressful. You know, when I think about the fourth option that we're going with here, the, the student support hubs option, you know, we are talking about bringing our neediest students onto campus, you know, with a lens of equity. But at the same time, I get extremely worried about having kind of our most underserved students, homeless, foster, low-income, special education students here. Like, we need really strong triggers that we religiously follow. If we're going to start having people on campus, you know, I look at this, and it's all about, am I going to put people in harm's way or not? And so those triggers are vitally important, that we're really clear that we're not getting people back together until we're positive they're safe. So there's a lot more work we have to do to be able to implement that plan effectively. We, and like, and also, you know, we're going to have to say, what if a child or a staff member becomes ill, or gets, or gets, gets sick at home? You know, we, we're going to have to be talking about what do we do in those cases as well. And as a board, we have to protect those who are least protected. You know, there's certainly families who have, feel, well, they're going to have no choice but to bring their children to us because they have to work. But risking a child, or a family's, or a staff's life should not be an option for us. So we just have to exhaust our options to protect our most underserved. And it's not like we're overflowing with money here, so we're going to be really careful about what we do and how we're spending money, because we just don't have a lot of room for, for maneuvering on that. You know, speakers have mentioned a couple things, and I want to bring up the subject of, you know, ventilation is part of this whole thing here. And we seem to have a number of schools where we get reports that ventilation is not very good. And I don't know how we can change that, but obviously ventilation in schools is an important part of, of any plan for bringing students back. And we have to make sure we're doing, if we start to bring people back, we do that at schools that have good ventilation. Mr. Duffy, I wanted to ask you about athletics. Did you send out a note a while ago that we're going to start to bring kids together for, you know, non-contact, socially-distanced workouts, et cetera? We've got the CIF deciding on July twentieth what's going to happen with sports. Can you talk, talk us more about like, if we're going to continue with that plan for letting the kids work out together, or just because of new rules from the county, we won't be doing that?
Thanks, Mr. Panas. I'm actually going to ask Dr. Wold to jump in here. He's overseeing athletics this year, and I know that team has been working through a potential practice schedule for some of our teams, social distancing. I know we have some new county regs, so I'm going to ask Dr. Wold to chime in on where we have left that right now with, with our athletics.
Good evening. So we did start a pilot this week for those that, it's completely voluntary, for conditioning only. No students or staff can go inside any of the buildings. We can't use the locker rooms or anything else. It's just for small groups under a very specific set of protocols. No touching, no shared equipment, to allow them to try to get out in the fields and see if we can indeed develop a configuration that would allow for us to continue as we get more CIF guidance. Our goal is that we don't want to eliminate the possibility of doing athletics, even while we're in this close. At the same time, we're not moving to do anything that's contact or going to put students in danger, or staff in danger in any way. So we're trying the pilot with conditioning, groups of twelve, no contact, keeping the social distance a six foot outside, in a voluntary basis, as we're waiting for the CIF guidelines to come out in the next week or so.
And if the CIF says no fall sports, will we stop that, or will we continue this, this pilot?
We, we would follow along with the CIF guidelines, and then work to determine what is the best way to keep those athletes connected to their coach in a virtual mode. There, there's a possibility CIF may push the fall sports into the spring and consolidate things. We're also even looking at, should there be the ability to have sports, and not all leagues stay together? Can we consolidate to provide options for our students? So we're, we're continuing to look at every potential option to ensure that our coaches stay engaged with our athletes. And we are keeping all coaches on payroll. We're making sure that they are staying connected with their sports.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy, could you clarify asynchronous versus synchronous models?
Yes. So synchronous means that the teacher and students are learning together synchronously. So a teacher is teaching, and students are part of that class. That's what you would know sort of as maybe live, live instruction. Asynchronous is a term we use to describe when the teaching and learning aren't necessarily happening in a synchronous fashion. So that could be, a teacher has recorded a lesson for students to do on their own. There is a resource they're supposed to go and watch on their own time. So the asynchronous is not necessarily teacher and student doing the same thing at the same time, but you get the flexibility of time out of it. Does that help?
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. When August seventeenth rolls around, are we going to be having meals at every school?
When August seventeenth rolls around, are we going to have meals at every school? If we are in the distance learning format, Phase One, we would not be serving meals at every single school.
Or pickup, you know, not necessarily serving, but pickup.
Pickup. I will also turn that over to Dr. Wold. I believe right now, we, if we are staying in Phase One, we would not be moving to a pickup meal service at fifty-five sites. We'd maintain a set of central sites, possibly expand.
So exactly. Our goal is to continue, we're in what's called the Seamless Summer Program right now, where any individual under the age of eighteen can receive a meal. Starting August seventeenth, until the federal government changes the regulations, we go back to the normal national school lunch program, where we would have to have student ID. They have given waivers for parent pickups, and so we're working to see if we're going to get waivers to continue with consolidated sites, or whether we're going to have to have something at each site for pickup. We will absolutely have meal service. We will absolutely make sure that our families are eligible. We're already beginning outreach, because we have to get new applications every year. And this is important for all families to hear. Many folks, their financial situation has changed because of the pandemic, who didn't qualify in the past, now will qualify. We want to make sure we capture that information this summer, so that should the US Department of Education not grant waivers, we want to make sure every child that's possibly eligible continues to get fed. So we'll have more information in the next couple of weeks, as we're waiting for USDA to give us that.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Duffy, I'm just wondering, do we currently have an idea for a plan on how we're going to keep the public up to date about our progress on the school reopening? And also, is there going to be, like, in the past, we've done it where people can send in questions, and they're posted on our website, and answers are posted?
Yes. So that we still have our hotlines and website access up, so if people want to email us questions. But as soon as we finish that instructional framework, which I think is what everybody's after right now, that would go out in a community letter from me and use all of the usual logistical resources to get those out through schools, et cetera. So as soon as we know, for example, you know, core instruction's going to take place on Monday, Tuesday, nine AM to twelve AM, or something like that, whatever the, the final detail is, that will go out immediately, so parents can plan around that. And we'll use, like I said, all of our usual vehicles. We also have a board meeting on the twenty-ninth. We have a board meeting on the fifth, so we have two more board meetings before school starts. So will you, you know, once we have that defined, that's key information for everybody, and we'll aggressively get that out. I know there was a comment about the town hall, that it wasn't really a town hall. And I'm sorry if it was mislabeled. We wanted just to make sure that for the, the many thousands of people who are tuning in, that we had an opportunity to share, here's where we are, here's the framework. We're going to open in distance learning and really make that information clear. So we'll continue to make sure everybody gets the information in a timely way.
Okay, and I've got two more questions I'll ask them at once, and then I'm done. I'm, I'm just wondering if we're planning on creating any guidance, or if the county's planning on creating guidance for parents who want to get information about how they can bring small groups of kids together for social and or purposes. And also, a recent Ed Source article talked about how some districts are really examining, as a preliminary way of returning to school, some sort of safe outdoor, outdoor education protocols to facilitate getting kids together, perhaps with teachers in that case.
Yes. So that's a, the, your first question is a good one. You know, we are not providing direct information, and I can work with our county to see what we can provide around this, I think really what you're talking about, this sort of pod idea, right, which is a number of families just stay together. And I know, for example, a number of our family friends are talking together since our kids go to Oakland Unified, which will be starting also in distance learning, you know, about, okay, are we going to share five different homes on five different days and pod up in that way, so that, you know, our kids rotate between five houses, or something like that? I don't know where we're going to land on that, but I think that's the idea that a number of families are talking about in terms of these pods. The other question about outdoor education, definitely outdoor education, definitely exploring that. I think we want to look into what we might be able to do in small groups outside. I think all of those safety protocols come into play, of course. But we have seen students go to camps throughout the summer. There's a lot we've seen that's been successful. So we do have to look at that and see if there's anything we can do for a staff member or a group of kids doing something for some time outside.
Thank you. That's all my questions. I appreciate this.
Thank you, Trustee Panis. Trustee Cuevas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Panis, for your comments. Thank you, staff, for your presentation and thank you, community, for your comments. I've been thinking a lot about this in relation to decisions that we need to make. And one of the things I do want to let everybody know is that I'm going to be pretty consistent with my belief that we are in a pandemic for an infectious disease that has no cure and no vaccine right now, and our obligation to provide education for students. I'm only interested in doing that in the absolute safest way. Given everything that's happened, I just need folks to know I will not be supporting physically opening up our campuses or bringing any students back for individualized attention unless we have a point and reach a point where this is no longer an infectious disease and some kind of vaccine or some kind of therapeutic options are widely available. And the reason why is because I've sat in this seat for a number of years and we make very key decisions, key decisions that do in fact have impact on families' lives, most importantly, on students' lives and the lives of our staff. But I never imagined that I would have to sit and make a decision that would be one that has immediate, like within weeks, two weeks of somebody coming down with this disease passing away, life and death implications. And so as a result, I want to remind folks that when we're talking about, and there are plenty of rules that are out there in terms of how to keep each other safe through a pandemic, but no guarantee that that in fact is what's going to stop this because we still see spikes in the infection rates right now. And so I want to remind folks that some of our schools, in particular, the schools with the highest need students, already serve significantly, number of students are overcrowded to begin with. Schools like Downer, over 630 students or between more than 600 students. Schools like Dover, 681 students. A school like Bayview, even 529, this is for, you know, demographic data on our school enrollment. It may have changed, it changes a little bit, but this tells you the clusters of students we're talking about. Schools like, let's look even at Helms, almost 1,000 students that I've got to bring into this one place together. Tell me a place that is saying, make plans to figure out how you're going to bring 1,000 individuals together and keep them safe. So I feel that our attention needs to be spent on perfecting, on improving and getting better at distance learning. Because that is the way to keep everyone physically safe. And I'm interested in putting our energy there. And I know that's going to disappoint folks depending on what your perspective is. And that's what I've said many times is great about our country. Our country, there is room for everybody's opinion. There is absolutely room. And I wish there was room for everybody to actually sit and have a vote on this board, but it doesn't, our organization of our democracy doesn't work out that way. It's five people and I happen to be one of them. Which means I have a greater responsibility than those with opinions for keeping everyone as safe as possible in terms of this pandemic. And so I appreciate the focus. I do think we need to talk about how we're supporting for better outcomes, that we are making sure our delivery of distance learning is high quality, that it is structured, that it provides routine, that is both, for the most part, live, since we can talk and have live interaction. And then the supports that happen are really about how we're supporting parents and students to be able to adjust to that delivery system and providing supports to them. Even the notion superintendent, you talked about, oh, our families, a couple of families are getting together and making decisions. That is a personal decision that you are making for your family that I will not be held responsible for. But the decision I make here on this board, and you should make those decisions for your family and folks should be empowered to do that. But the decision here where we hold the trust of 28,000 and maybe we didn't do a good job, we, I talked about where are they? We still got to do better. But I know for a fact that I'm not going to contribute to bringing kids back together and putting them and their families and their teachers and their staff in dangerous situations, knowing, one, the state has not provided more money to even buy one extra cleaning supply other than what we might be getting from the first, the first stimulus around this. We still don't know where that's going to go, but that is to make up for what we've already spent on this pandemic to this point. So I know for a fact that I can't afford to keep people safe at the levels that I would want my own family to be safe. And so just logically, I need to fall back on the one, the methods that will in fact increase the possibility of safety for everyone. And so I just wanted to make it clear to the community that I do hear you. I do hear your perspectives. I am listening to those of you who say, well, what am I going to do about childcare? And what am I going to do about the fact that I don't think it's such a big deal? I respect your opinion and I appreciate you sharing it. And I'll take that into consideration with all of my information that I'm using to make this decision. But I will be completely transparent in terms of letting folks know that I am not in favor of doing anything other than distance learning until we are out of this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cuevas. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you very much. First, to all of the community members who have participated on the task force, thank you to staff for working on this and leading this effort. And I also want to say thank you to Supervisor Joya and the Deputy Health Officer for coming to this meeting and also to Supervisor Joya and the Health Officer for coming to the last meeting to give us some more context as to what's going on in the county and our community in particular. I want to start by making a comment around the social safety net. This is a great example as to why we need a social safety net in place before the emergency actually starts. What's happening now is across America, across the state, across the county, we have all of these local agencies scrambling to put things in place because frankly, the social safety net that we should have in this country has been slowly and sometimes quickly torn out from unders. We are a school district and some of the things that we are being required to do or asked to do because we care about our community are not things that are necessarily in our bailiwick. And I want people to remember that as we move forward. I want to talk also about the presentation that we have tonight and the slides in particular. I've been reaching out to parents. I've been reaching out to staff members. And I don't think that for the most part, they're that far apart. When I talk to teachers, when I talk to classified folks, when I talk to families, I am hearing consistently from them that they want to stay in distance learning. Now, I'm not saying that I haven't heard anyone say the opposite, but I am hearing overwhelmingly that they want to do distance learning and that includes from our families. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to ask my first question because I was a little confused when I watched the town hall presentation. And today, Mr. Duffy, some things are a little clear. Are you saying that on August 17th that there will be absolutely no students on campus?
I am not saying that 100%, but I believe that is where we are going to start. The only way there would be students on August 17th is if we negotiate successfully conditions that make clear how students and staff can return to school. That is clear and negotiated and agreed upon, brought to the board, all agreed, and then we determine from there we are going to bring back some small groups of students. If that were to happen before August 17th, there's a possibility that some students could be there. I don't think that's likely. And also, if the board were to give us direction to say we don't want any students back August 17th, we'd have to take that direction. But I think we've put some preconditions in place that say specifically, we'd call that phase two, before phase two can happen, these things have to be in place. And I'm not sure we can get there by August 17th. So, you know, I don't think so, but there's always an outside possibility that we're able to get that agreement and together we all decide that this very small group of students should start together.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And I think folks in the community were hearing kind of two different things that we weren't going to have people in there on the 17th and then that we were. And it sounds like, so I'm just going to say for myself, I am opposed to anyone being there on August 17th. And what I would ask from this board, and I'll explain why, and Trustee Cuevas actually hit on quite a few of the points already. But quite frankly, in a nutshell, I've set up here on this board and I've said multiple times to the public that I will treat your children the way I treat my children. And that that is the best that I can do. So even if I make a mistake, you know that that mistake was made out of love. My children will not be at school on August 17. They won't. And they won't be at school on August 17th because I believe that it is dangerous. And I do appreciate what loss learning does. But I appreciate the loss of my children, frankly, even more. They will not be there. And they fall into some of those category tier ones, but they won't, they won't be there. And that's a personal decision that I'm making for my family, my wife and I, and I feel that is necessary. I'm not going to pretend that, I won't be doing that. As far as the triggers are concerned, my internet just kind of chopped up a little bit. Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. So as far as the triggers are concerned, I do not believe that we should be using triggers because triggers are automatic. And this is a very fluid situation. We may have some markers that we look for around bringing children, whatever automatically.
Your connection broke off and then your speech sped up after, I think, to try to catch up what you had said. Would you mind repeating that?
You, what I was saying is that triggers are automatic and I don't think you use triggers in a fluid situation. Because you have to be able to maintain flexibility. So I think any triggers that we're using should be taken off of the table. And that we should actually be doing this. Frankly, what is actually for direction to the superintendent is when staff feels based on talking with the county health experts, that it is safe at that time to bring something back to us that is detailed and that is a fleshed out plan. Because what I'm seeing right now, to be honest with you, I think a framework or a conceptual idea is a really good way to label this, but I can't potentially put somebody in harm way over a framework, over a conceptual plan. So when we get to the point where you all think, Mr. Duffy, it's safe, I need you to come back to this board with an actual fleshed out plan that says, this is how we're going to do it. This is why we think it's safe. And like Trustee Cuevas said, that we have the resources to make sure that, for example, the schools are even clean, are clean to the standards that they should be. Because if you recall, even before this started happening, you know, we've been running a skeleton custodial crew for a long time. Before this started happening, I was complaining about lack of soap in bathrooms before there was even a COVID issue that blew up. So none of those things have been addressed. And we have to address them because that's what's going to keep our kids safe. The last thing that, two things I want to bring up, and I'm going to stop, but on tier one with the first phase in, which under your idea, Mr. Duffy, could potentially be on the 17th, and I'm asking the board to say no to that. But tier one is almost, that's like 80% of the school district falls under tier one. So tier one is high absenteeism, underserved, which I'm thinking like low income children, right? Sped students, foster youth, homeless, et cetera. And it literally says, et cetera. It's like 78% of our school children are free and reduced lunch. So when we're, so when you have a situation where like almost everybody, eight out of 10 people fall into tier one, that's not a phase in. That's everybody just come back. And that's not, that's not saying, so I personally think where we should be focused on, and I think Trustee Cuevas is right. We, you know, we had to pivot very quickly in the spring to try to put on distance learning. And there was some successes, there were failures too. And we need to make sure that we're offering our families, in my opinion, a very high quality distance learning option. I mean, I guess option is the wrong word because I'm saying that's all it should be, but that we're doing it in a very high quality way. The other thing that I wanted to say is I know that we have some connectivity issues with some of our families and that we're working on that and that we probably won't be able to resolve that problem completely by the 17th. I was talking with a teacher today and she told me that what she's been doing with her students, because a lot of them don't have internet access, or even if they do, it's on their phones and it's very hard to do work, real work on a phone. She's actually been on the telephone with her students. And that they've been doing math and all sorts of things, essentially what some classrooms are doing in Zoom. They're doing it on the phone. And so if we can figure out a way to incorporate, for example, FreeConferenceCall.com, maybe it's not that, but that's what I use. So I'm using it as an example, but some kind of phone system where we can get a lot of people on a call at once because where all families don't have internet access or reliable internet access. Most people have phones now. And if we could figure out how to get them, you know, the hard copies of the, of the work, whether it's their books or whether it's printouts or whatnot, we can get those to them. Our teachers can actually do a lot of this over the phone. And I think we'd be able to pick up a lot of the students that we're missing because we've been solely relying on the internet. The last thing that I would like to put out there is we have a lot of work to do before August 17th. And I think that is making everybody nervous and rightfully so. Because we want to do this the best way that we can because we want our children to not suffer during this period of time. So I'm going to throw something out there that I haven't heard us talk about, but I know one school district has done it. I think that we should actually consider delaying the start of school. And how long would obviously be up for discussion, but if we push the start of school back two weeks or three weeks, that would give us time. And when I say us, you know, I'm giving credit where credit is. It would get staff time because I'm not the one negotiating with the labor unions, for example. But it would give staff time. It would give the bargaining units time to actually sit down together and work out a thoughtful plan that addresses some of the issues that were brought up in the spring, but that we may not really be able to address because if we just move forward with the August 17th date, we're really, we're going to be just like racing to get something done. And it may not be the best for everybody. So I would like us to, to just summarize, I would like us as a board to direct staff. To direct staff not to have students on campus on the seventeenth. When staff feels that it is safe to then come back to the board with that and a detailed plan. About how to move forward and to make the decision then and not to be working off of these triggers. And then the last thing is for us to consider actually delaying the start of school. So we can actually. Take the time that we need to develop a robust plan. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Trustee Lada.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for your presentation. I think that was what people were looking for, some more specific details and of course more to come. And I have to say, I think the direction is pretty clear. From this board that safety is number one and that we all feel like we're dealing with life and death. Of our children and we don't want anybody in danger, our employees, nobody. We don't want to put anybody at risk. So I have to agree with, you know, with everything that everybody has said before me. You know, one of the things in thinking about social emotional learning, when I was at Helms, I taught at Helms and I taught seventh and eighth graders. Combination and ELD ones and twos, so on occasion I would have a student two years in a row. And I have to say that, you know, that's called, it's, it's called looping, but you know, it would just kind of inadvertently happen. And the connection I would have with that student, the comfort, the trust. They knew what I was, you know, about and I knew their parents already. So there was, it was really like an immediate connection. And we all felt comfortable with each other and had opportunity to do that quite a bit. And so I'm just saying that in virtually, when students are placed, if that's at all possible. That when we look at social emotional, rather than having a brand new teacher all over and you don't know who, especially the younger, the younger. Students, but middle school, high school also. So it's tricky, I know, and some people might not want to do it. But I'm just saying that socially emotionally, it was, it was really effective and helpful. And so that's one suggestion. When the person came up talking about the arts, the, the comment about the arts and also PE. It reminded me back in the day, I don't know if they still have them, we used to have curriculum committees. And so we'd meet with, you know, I'd meet with the ELD teachers from across the district. Who were teaching at my level or my, yeah, grade and we could compare and we had, you know, we met regularly. And it was very insightful, there was a lot of learning that went on there and collaboration and collaboration. So that's kind of what that made me think of is the arts, PE, if they can be a creative. Down the line, down the line, not right away, but setting some things up, even virtually, even though virtually. So I guess the last thing I want to just say is that there's some things that have to happen. The constant communication, Mr. Duffy, you've been on a very good job of that and you've got to keep that up. People need to hear from you often about the progress, about the updates. So that they can feel secure and what's going on and what's happening. There should be no surprises. We don't want to move too quickly here. And the other key word to me that I like hearing is collaboration. That all of these moving parts, these individuals are collaborating together and negotiating together. For the best possible plan that we can get. And I know we can do that, we can do that. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that we will be able to, to get to that place eventually. And you know, eventually this thing will go away. We don't know when, but for all of us, safety is first. We really want to protect our, our, our community. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Lada. I want to just say that I really thank everybody who has been involved in the process of creating this framework. And pushing for this work to be done in a sincere and urgent way. I want to make sure that we emphasize hope. I know that these are really bleak times for many families, but I want us to not lose sight. Of the hope that is within all of us and within every decision that we make to keep everybody safe. And I want to begin again by thanking every single student, parent, community member, family member, teachers, principals, district staff. And community partners for the work you have done to create the framework and move forward with the work of the educational plan and its implementation now. I want to thank Dr. Radha Krishna, Mr. Joya and Ms. McNit for their presentations last Friday and today. I believe that the task force has identified school reopening needs and explicitly verbalized priorities, prioritization of these needs. And the next phase really is the, the planning process that we need to have. And working with the smaller groups from the, from the implementation task force to create a detailed thorough plan. That will actually systemically meet the needs identified and shared with the community already. And do so with, with equity as the guiding goal and expected outcome. I believe that we still need to hear more from stakeholder groups, especially those consisting of families of English language learners. Of Latinx students, of African American students. Of special education students and students experiencing homelessness to, to make distance learning work for them this fall. And what, what we have right now, I, I do want to reiterate that it is a framework for distance learning. And so now the work that we have to do with urgency is to make sure that we outline the plan that's going to be implemented. And share that in a timely manner with the community and have all the important details and, and key parts clearly in place. I have a few questions, I have. About eight questions to be exact. So on page thirty-seven of the presentation, I just wanted to clarify this for the community. It says instructional aids, childcare credential staff, before and after school workers as well as other staff will be available. When this was being put into the presentation. Mr. Duffy, can you clarify what is meant by childcare credential staff? Because I think it's not one hundred percent clear and if it's making a reference to providing childcare for essential workers. Or for who in addition to the student hubs? Or if it's directly referencing the student hubs, that, that just wasn't clear to me.
Yes.
Members of the community.
I think what we're saying there is that basically anybody who's going to lead kids. Inside of a hub needs to be fully credentialed.
But is that as a credential teacher or as a like daycare provider license?
Not as a daycare provider license, no. But it has to be somebody, you know, within our system. Who has the appropriate credentials and that's what we still have to determine. What we can do and what we can't do. Especially if, you know, in that model, the majority of teachers are teaching at home. So we can continue to work to clarify that and clarify that language. But the spirit of it really was that, you know, we would make sure folks had the proper credentials to be in front of kids. And I was specifically thinking about K-12 credentials.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then, and was it, and it was in reference to K-12 credential staff that would actually be teaching students? That was the, the intent, not like as childcare.
Teaching students or supporting students, right? So if you were. If there was a teacher teaching from home and somebody was taking care of eight or ten kids in the school. They would have the appropriate credentials to be able to be in front of those students. So, and.
So more like, more like supervision? That was the, the thought behind that, like having in-person supervision for students in distance learning?
Yeah, so if teachers are teaching at home. And I need, I'm going to, we're going to have a group of, let's say, ten students in a group. That they are with, you know, if it's, if it's with an after school provider, that person's appropriately credentialed. If it's with a certificated person, that, that person is appropriately credentialed. So that we're not just bringing kids in in front of random people to take care of them and go online.
Thank you for clarifying. I think that it sounded at the beginning when we started having a discussion around having support. And in terms of very small cohorts and students that would be in stable bubbles. I know that that was something that was being explored in other school districts as well, neighboring areas and other parts of the state. And I think that the more I thought about it, you know, while we think, I think that it's a good intention. I think some of my fellow board members and, and public speakers have brought up the, the idea that it may actually have a disparate impact. On already disproportionately affected populations in, in our county. And so I have concerns that it may actually exacerbate some of the very things that we're trying to work to dismantle, right? I think that there was talk about, you know, having a lot of other invisible, you know, barriers that are built into the, the impacted socioeconomic backgrounds. Of our students and not just medically, but also for staff and their kids. And, and you know, for, for family members who don't have medical insurance, but who may really need support with a child. So having to have that make, you know, to make that tough decision between like, if I have. The ability to send my kid to be in this cohort and, and just almost like the illusion of safety too. And it's just really, it's a really hard, I think it's a really hard dilemma because we know that some kids will also be staying home without parents. And, and I know as a child, I know a lot of people have gone through this too, when they're little, that their parents are working. So they have to watch their little siblings or they're just watching themselves. And, and it's a hard reality for so many people. And I think that if, if we try to go forward with having student hubs. We also put at risk a lot of the people who are going to be sending their kids there. And if they don't have medical insurance, if there's language barriers, if there's. I feel like there's good intention, but we can actually exacerbate things by doing it. So I really want us to look at this carefully and not put, you know. Specifically marginalized communities already at risk of medical racism and ableism in a position where they cannot look for themselves once they are affected by it. And so I, you know, I just want to share, I don't want this to be a trigger for everybody, but I just wanted to say that I did find out a few days ago. And I think I shared this with you, Mr. Duffy, about a teacher in Arizona who, who contracted this from, you know, teaching in a distance learning environment. And it was three teachers, the three of them became affected with it and she was hospitalized for two weeks and she actually passed away. And it was, you know, I, I just, I cannot, I feel like we cannot have. The lives of, on any, you know, of anybody on us, on any decision that we make, we have to make it in a way to protect lives. And to, to, to reiterate that we're doing everything in our power to, to help everybody get through this as healthy as possible. And, and I, so my next question is asking about the role of instructional aids and support staff. I know that there's going to be conversations with unions and with different workers in our districts. So I just wanted to hear more about how we're going to maximize the capacity of support staff such as instructional aids. To, to assist in breakout rooms and one-on-one check-ins with students and in a weekly academic and even social emotional support. So what is that, what is that work that we're going to be doing? What is the vision behind that?
Yep, and again, you know, we are at a sort of a framework phase. We're not at, here's the assignments of everybody minute to minute. But instructional aids have historically, you know, been assigned to either the student that they work with one-to-one. And they would continue to be assigned to that student. Or they're assigned to a particular classroom, so they're assigned to that teacher. And then from there, the teacher would work with that aide, whether it's for a student or for the class. And determining really the best use of that instructional aide, you know, in a breakout room, etc. And similarly with support staff, if you are a community outreach worker and you work at a school. You're still going to be assigned to that school and you're going to be working with your school leader to determine. What that's going to look like. We will however, have some district protocols. Around how we're doing attendance, how we're outreach to kids, how we're doing, you know, truancy, etc. And communicate those out to all the community workers, for example. But we'll keep the support staff, if they've been site-based or, you know, connected with a school or a particular student. They will stay in that way.
Thank you, and I've, I've had a lot of these questions. You know, that are either a combination of my questions and, and, and other things that people have asked me. Or just questions that community members have asked and they keep on repeating. So I'm gonna, some of them are gonna be more detailed than others. So with this one, I was just thinking about how are we going to also leverage virtual volunteers? Because I don't think that we necessarily did that during the emergency response that we had the last few months for distance learning. But how do we leverage virtual volunteers that are already registered with our district and, and new ones too, who would want to, to support that? Because I understand that there's going to be limits on, on the time and on the work that aides may do. But how do we then bring in volunteers that are batched and ready to go and want to support that too?
That's a great question and that is new territory for us that we have to continue to figure out. So similarly, we'd make sure, you know, anybody who's volunteering is appropriately screened. So that they can volunteer with us, even though they're not in physical contact, there's still some things that we need to know. Before you're around our kids, even virtually. You know, and then once we do that, I think similarly, you know, we'd leave that to the discretion. If this is a, a, a parent or volunteer helping out in a classroom, we'd leave that to the discretion of the teacher. Or the school, if they're working schoolwide. But I do think you bring up a, a, a very valid point, it's just like how to continue to leverage volunteers. And I know that's something we've heard from board in the past, Mr. Phillips, etc. Just to make sure they're in there. So I would be happy to bring some more information back about how we're thinking about virtual volunteers. What they might need to do to pass kind of muster to be able to work in our spaces. And then what that might look like.
Yeah, thank you, and, and I would really appreciate the follow-up. And I think that we can also envision how we can train volunteers who are already in the system and have been volunteering at schools. To, to, you know, understand the needs, the virtual needs and also maybe even create like a database of volunteers. Or if it already exists, have them match up their abilities and interest of support with the teachers and school sites that are requesting those types of support. So that it can be like a match. And I think that there's nearby districts that do similar work like that. So maybe, you know, having community engagement reach out to them or something that will enable for, for that type of communication to happen. So, so people are matched up with who they need and what they need. So please do, you know, circle back with us when you have some more updates on that. And in terms of accountability, you talked a little bit about tracking participation and doing attendance differently. So my thoughts on it is just really to push, to have, you know, frequent interactions with kids to make sure that they're being reached. And I know that there's a lot of feedback from community members and from parent leaders on how to reach them. And I think that there are some great ideas being presented and, and I'm excited about listening to how we're actually going to reach every student. Because I think that it was unacceptable, you know, that we had hundreds of kids that were not reached. And, and the onus is on us to reach out to them and to get to each of them in a timely manner. So how are we going to ensure that every single student this time around is actually reached every single day? And, and you know, not for over two days, you know, just as if we were in regular inside, in-person learning onsite. Like we would check in on them if they're missing, you know, one day if they don't go, if two days, then that's like, we have to check in. So how are we going to ensure that in a systemic way? Is it going to look like Excel sheets that are shareable and easily accessible by authorized staff on campus? Is it going to be, because I know not everyone's going to have a chance to go on Power School or access to Power School.
Yes, so I didn't include, and I know there was a speaker tonight who asked about the students we hadn't been able to track down. And I actually have information about that in my superintendent's report. And all of the, the work that the school community outreach workers have done through the summer to track down students. I think the big difference will be how we take attendance. We really were taking that basically once a week through one class. And we will be doing that more frequently, if not in every single period, especially at the secondary schools. Where they do have multiple periods and different classes. So I think the change in the attendance taking will be very important for us. And we'll solve, you know, I think three quarters of that problem. And then we'll take what we've learned from this year around who are the students that have been missing, why have they been missing? And I think we're getting even stronger at dealing with those issues, whether it's internet access, a Chromebook, a food. Whatever that is, I think it's really making sure we know the root cause so we can deal with it. Not just throwing blanket solutions, but what's really going on with this kid? Not just throwing blanket solutions, but what's really going on with this kid, what does he need or she need um and getting after it. So I I think we've done a really nice job pivoting and quickly figuring out what was happening with all these students. We just have to take that learning and implement it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and I think that what we're learning, I know that I recently learned that the majority of of, or not the majority, half of the students who were not reached, and you can um correct me if it's not accurate, but the half of the students that were not reached uh were English language learners.
That's correct. And that data will be, you know, we'll have that data in front of us. Um, some of it we've heard has been uh translation issues and just communication issues uh with with students who don't, not necessarily Spanish speakers. Also, we know we've had a lot of uh recent um immigration of students who speak indigenous languages. Um, you know, so making sure we have actually translation in some of those other languages to be able to connect to families is important. And I've just had.
Yeah, and I and I think I would really, um. Sorry, I think everybody froze. I don't know if it's my connection.
Uh, I'm okay. Ms. Laura, do you want to take over here for a minute while we? Okay.
So sorry, I don't know what happened. My computer froze and then everything went away. And now we're back. Um, sorry about that. So I I just wanted to, um, you know, I didn't get to hear the very last part of your, I think of your answer, Mr. Duffy. But I just want us to stay very um sharp on what systems we're going to create. So I would really like to see um explicitly what what kinds of systems we're going to be using at the at the site levels. Once we have the presentation and what the plan is going to look like when we begin schools, um when we begin classes. Um, and and what, you know, non-traditional ways of reaching students, um, we're going to embark on as well. Because it sounds like a lot of these students may need additional um outreach that is not traditional um and that is not effective with, um, you know, with with them as as, you know, their needs are not being met. So I I'm I'm really looking forward to having that conversation and just having a lot of transparency about the work that we need to do to focus on English language learners um in this work. Um, and then, let's see. Let me find my, okay, and I'm guessing that part of the negotiations are also going to um include how to maximize the the, you know, the services of scouts, of psychologists um and everyone on board in addition to to teachers, to to support that work of checking in with students and ensuring that everybody is reached too.
Yes.
Thank you. And you were alluding a little bit to this and talking about uh social emotional learning um supports for students and having like support groups, having a time that is not academic, but that is actually to support the the development of children and their peer relationships and just having that time to to connect with others. Um, are you, are you thinking about also having um safe virtual spaces for parents uh that are, you know, specifically um based on their interests or the groups that they identify with? Uh, such as having African-American, Latinx, ELL, special education, um affinity groups so that we can provide that kind of like safe confidential space for them to talk about what's working, their experience, what's not working and and just have have a space that's for them. And that's not necessarily um with the pressures of other other people around, but just something, you know, that they can have as a community, even if it's virtual.
Yes, I I mean, I think we can start also to build off of the committees that we have established inside of schools already. You know, really making sure there's functioning APACs, which are the African-American parent advisory groups. The um, the um, ah, why am I forgetting the um? The ELAX, excuse me, uh, our English learner advisory councils, you know, just that those are all up and running in the virtual environment. Um, so people have those spaces to connect. Um, and I think we just have to work with our parent community and see what else they need. They've certainly asked for, you know, more training sessions, um, you know, around the tools. Hearing earlier from schools and uh school leaders about what's going to happen uh during the year. Um, so we'll continue to take our cues from them also about, you know, what they need.
Thank you. And and I think that also um we need to look, I think that these are going to be areas that we're going to be looking at very closely. And I just want to confirm that with you too. Um, can everybody hear me still?
Yes, but then no.
Okay. Okay, so now she's frozen. Okay, Mr. Duffy, did you finish answering all of her questions you that?
I think I answered the ones that I heard. My sense was that there are a few more. I did want to take a moment um to mention that we will, you know, move that task force into four working groups. So this question of like, how fast can you move the work? Um, and they will have one parent and one student on each of them, but we're going to try to be agile and move and get these details um hammered out. And again, for people who are really interested in that report about sort of the this, the missing students or the students who didn't attend regularly um through the spring, I'll be talking about that in my superintendent's report.
That's good, that's good. And I think you have a lot of different ways to communicate with us with the presentations. And uh I think that that's your communications that you also send out to everyone. So we can get those details there as well. And she's back.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, I am so sorry, I, my internet seems like it's um disconnecting. So I think I will need to be updating that um soon. Um, can everybody hear me again? Thank you. So I I don't know if everybody heard what I was saying, but I was talking about how I think that we need to make sure that in in talks with uh, you know, everybody who's going to be on board with distance learning, our teachers, our administrators, we need to have um, a set of understandings around which assessments will be most useful, which are going to be the essential standards and skills that are going to be um, you know, taught, knowing that we cannot go for every single thing right now, but we're really going to have to focus on what are the most essential things that kids uh in specific age groups need to be able to do and learn and and how to work as a team to do that um at a site and and across schools in the district and and making, you know, assessments that are doable and useful for teachers and for parents to 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 really support students during this time academically as well as socially emotionally. And I think also, you know, to keep in mind when you have uh conversations, uh, Mr. Duffy, um, with uh labor partners and with everybody about the need to ensure that we have equity and how we provide um asynchronous and synchronous education. I think that trustee Banas was talking a little bit about that earlier um in making sure that there's an understanding if, you know, if it's going to be CSO, if it's going to be Dropbox, if it's going to be Google Classroom files. Uh, what are the the actual accessibility points for content for students who cannot participate during the live sessions or who may miss one? Um, I hope that everybody is able to participate and that we can find live sessions um that are either, you know, in the morning, afternoon, evening, and just something that works for kids. Um, but I really want us to make sure that we have these conversations and and have mutual understandings with everybody who's going to be doing this work. Um, and and the last, the last question that I have is about anti-bias, anti-racist classroom management in a virtual setting. What is that going um to look like? And do you have, do you have a vision that you're sharing with people about that um in the weekly focus in in virtual education?
That's a great question. So the way we're trying to frame it is that we would have weekly time uh for all of our staff to do professional learning around um technology, you know, traditional content, et cetera. And we would have another block of time where staff would do professional learning around issues of race and equity. And inside of there, you would, you know, tackle questions like discipline disproportionality. Um, and that's a place, I think, we would have to talk district-wide. But I also think schools are going to need to talk to each other as a new school community about what discipline really looks like in the virtual world, right? Um, so we're making sure that we're not just snapping off somebody's screen because we're frustrated with their behavior the same it would be of just like quickly kicking them out of class. Um, and we're working through that. But I would say that's also really new territory for us. And it's a place that we're going to need to collect data to understand uh how many kids are being disciplined in the virtual world, uh because I do think our students have so many more options to not attend or to leave or to turn off. Like, they're much more in control in that way of deciding, you know, when they're going to engage and not. And I think with that, we really need to understand from our teachers um how they're dealing with discipline inside the virtual world, what they need from us. And then where where the hotspots are, you know, are there a set of classrooms that are really struggling with that? And how can we help? But it is, I think it's a new area for us. We are really getting good at dealing with a lot of that work in person. Um, and now we have to to make that shift.
Thank you. Yeah, and and I just want to remind us all, you know, this is my last question, and I just have a few more comments before, if anybody else has any other um follow-up comments they would like to make before we finish this item. But I think that the work that we're doing here is work of, you know, about racial justice. And we know that communities of color are being disproportionately affected. And kids of color too are also being disproportionately affected by school closures and the pandemic. Um, I think that making, you know, priorities and practices that really benefit kids, such as having designated ELD instructional time to ensure that we have a focus on uh English language learners, um making sure that we have social emotional learning opportunities and connections, accessibility, reaching kids in non-traditional ways. Um, hands-on learning kits or weekly or monthly sets for for younger students especially. Um, equity and scheduling classes too, and just systemic understandings and supports and expectations for all sites. You know, I think that we're going to have to provide a lot of support to sites and site leaders. And I think that you brought up a great point about how our kids, you know, um disciplined in the virtual world. I actually don't know anything about that. And and I have not, you know, in in my short experience doing distance learning this past few um months, that's not something that um had come up as something that that people are collecting data on yet. And so I'm I'm really looking forward to understanding, you know, what the impacts are. And today I was just reading about um a high school student in Michigan who has actually been jailed now uh for almost a month, I believe, for um not meeting her probation requirements um because she was not checking in via distance learning. And because she didn't attend for a few days, uh, her probation officer actually said that she was not meeting the requirements. And I just think it's so screwed up that those are the the side, you know, the the unintended consequences, I guess, of of distance learning and how people may leverage that. And I just think that so many of our teachers did an amazing job at reaching students. And I I hope that we get to see, you know, what ways, what things do they do to engage their kids and to make them feel welcome and safe to want to keep on coming back. And hopefully we we give them a chance to share that as well. Um, and so do you think that we're going to be able to have the plan, I mean, by the latest, by July twenty ninth, to share at the special board meeting?
I am not sure. I mean, we will share with you everything we have at every board meeting. Um, uh, but we are really hoping to finish that week uh because the following week, August third, is when our administrators return. Uh, so we'd like to put as much in their hands as possible that's complete, you know. And just as we have to fill in the framework kind of to this level, then they have to go to their schools and then fill it in a bit more. Um, so we we want to try to get everything in their hands by the third. Um, so we'll present everything we have to you uh on the twenty ninth. And we have also a board meeting the following week. Um, so we will, you know, do this basically um at, you know, all of the next coming board meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. And board members, I will wrap it up right now in two minutes. I promise. I know I've taken longer today, so thank you for your patience. Um, and in closing, you know, my comments for this item, I just want to say that my goal is to really keep children, families and staff safe. I want to ensure that any decisions that I make here will not put kids or adults at risk of contracting COVID nineteen. And I firmly believe that it's my responsibility to do so while doing everything that I can at the same time to ensure that the educational opportunities and academic and social emotional programming for kids that we as a school district need to provide um is there to continue to support students and and help them really move toward a, you know, pursuing their goals and dreams in life, even in this time. And as a teacher and as a parent, it really does pain me that we cannot open our school sites for in-person education and go back to school as we do each August. Um, and and I, you know, I'm hopeful and I'm confident that we're making the right decision and that we won't be putting the lives of children and their families and staff at risk. And I, you know, I I I want to be honest as well. Like trustee Phillips said, I am not sending my child to school. Uh, she will be enrolled in distance learning as well, and her TK year of education will be very different than what we expected. And it is a weird and hard time um for everyone and for some folks more than other, more than for others. And I I just want to make sure that I keep everybody that I can safe. Um, and school districts, I think, I I will always argue are the most important local agencies to be involved in because they have the biggest task in our nation. Um, we're literally entrusted with educating children, providing them with transformational learning opportunities that will impact their lives in the most positive and effective ways to support their dreams and goals, literally. School districts are tasked with and responsible for the overall shaping of our communities through the very education we provide to students in each neighborhood we serve. Um, and if we don't raise up to that challenge, then we really, you know, let communities down. And and this is a huge responsibility in and of itself. And on top of that, now we have the responsibility to make sure that all children are safe from this pandemic and their families and staff and their families as well. We are not county health officials, we are not state health officials, but we do know how to follow guidance by the CDC. And we do know how to make sure that we protect them based on that guidance. And we are advocates and elected officials entrusted with keeping all kids in our community safe and minimizing and even eliminating the risk of COVID transmission in our schools. Um, I want to reiterate that no one is disposable here. Uh, we are still having meetings via Zoom to minimize and eliminate exposure for ourselves and for the community. So we cannot send our kids back to schools only to have another emergency response closure and shift to distance learning if families and staff start to get sick. And then have students again be pushed to an abrupt transition to distance learning again. Um, I think it should not be a privilege to be able to stay home during a pandemic and minimize exposure, but sadly it is. And it is an imbalance of social and economic equality and equity that puts many working families and their children at a disadvantage. My parents are considered essential workers and they have been working ever since things shut down. They work in the food industry, food service industry, so they don't have literally a day off. Um, and this stays a toll on all of us. It's heartbreaking to know, you know, that some of our own family members have to go out every single day and and be exposed and not have much of a choice for it. And I I think that here we have a choice to make a decision that will drastically reduce the risk of so many families and students and staff and their families from becoming infected from COVID nineteen. Um, other school districts are making this an extremely complicated decision as well, and many similarly others completely differently. And and if we cannot guarantee the safety of kids and their families and staff and their families, then we cannot move forward to in-person instruction um and rush reopening. And and I think that we need to, you know, have urgent work to continue and and to make bold decisions that really focus on reaching every single kid, literally every single child and and every family in a systemic way that works for them. Um, and there's literally no, no way around this responsibility. And I keep on saying literally because I really mean that. Like, we have to take on this seriously and there's no way around it. And and this is something that we need to accomplish during the pandemic and and we need to make sure that we provide the safety, the resources and the education our students need as children and human beings first and foremost. And we have a responsibility in front of us, and I want us to really work tirelessly, collaboratively and with urgency to come back on July twenty ninth. That's really what I hope that we can see. Um, and what I really want to push for at our special board meeting and be ready with an educational plan, even if there's changes to be made, I think that our community deserves to have um a clear plan and and what the implementation is going to to look like and be shared with stakeholders. And and that is my hope. And that is my my outcome that I would really like for us to to work toward, um, if not sooner, you know. But but July twenty ninth date, that is something that I really um want to push for. So thank you all for for listening. I know I took a long time today with a monologue, but I really want to just really say that I I think we need to do the safe, the safe decision. In this case, we cannot rush anything and we cannot do anything lightly. Um, so I, if there's any other, you know, closing comments before we finish this, I would like to just go back in the same order to. Um, so I, if there's any other, you know, closing comments before we finish this, I would like to just go back in the same order to student trustee Vasquez Simula. Trustee Panas, trustee Cuevas, trustee Phillips, trustee Lada. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, this is also sad and depressing. I want to change it up real quick. I'll talk about some things maybe that are not as sad. Um, senior activities is one of them. Uh, this is a little bit off topic before I go back on topic, but. I think we, uh, and through all this, we can't forget our seniors, um, and who will be moving on to their next phase.
So entrusted, Dawa, we cannot hear you. It looks like your audio is on, but we cannot, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry, okay. Uh, uh, sorry about that. So one thing I really wanted to talk about was senior activities. Um, I think it's important not to forget our seniors as well through all of this. Um, we don't know how long this pandemic will be going on and what, uh, one idea that I wanted to share with all, uh, with you all. Was maybe uh putting in a group of students together from different schools so that they can collaborate. Um, instead of each school doing their own individual activities, um, students can work together to figure out what they want to do. And maybe make it more of a district-wide thing than each school individually. Um, that way the students can still maybe find a way to have some fun activities for for the, um, as as activities. Um, seeing how we can't do the normal things right now and we don't know how long it's going to be going on. Um, another thing tomorrow, um. Myself and a few other students from El Cero High School will be meeting with our principal to be talking about, um. Just things that affect just our school and not the district. And I think that'll be an industry, uh, interesting conversation to have. And I think. Uh, Mr. Duffy, maybe that will be uh another interesting thing that we can um try and have other schools do as well. So that they're working together with their own school because that is their own community as well. Um, we are also, else, some of us from El Cero are also trying to plan on a time to meet with teachers. Um, to see what they think of all this, um, to see what their expectations are, uh, but to also tell them what we're expecting and. What we think about this, that we're all on the same page. Um, again, I think it's so important that we work together not only as a district, but as our little communities, our little schools as well. Um, so Mr. Duffy may be planning like that for other schools. That could be, that could be interesting. Um.
Good idea.
Internal, sorry?
I said, good idea.
Okay, the, um, internal bias, I think this, we've been having this talk for a while now about racism, internal bias. Um, is there anything, any can, anything that's going to be that teachers can take anything, um? In terms of internal bias or racism that will be done, um, before the beginning of school year or at the beginning of the school year, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, uh, but I also want to emphasize that through the school year, I think is what's most important. Sometimes we do some things right at the beginning of the school year and then we never revisit them uh for the rest of the year. So. We're really trying to build out this block, this training time, but I don't call it less training, right? I mean, it's training, but it's reflection, it's discussion, it's engagement, um, that happens every week for staff. Um, that they can do around race and equity, around implicit bias and get into those conversations. And have a really separate space to talk about the tech tools like Google Classroom or Seesaw. I mean, those are, they're really two separate. Pieces of work. So our goal and and, you know, as part of this plan is to hammer out how much time we can do, how often it happens. Uh, but I definitely see space for us to do that, um, especially with the teachers. Now I think we really have to think about what do the students need for those types of conversations? Um, and build that out because sometimes they just, you guys want to have those conversations without adults and sometimes you want to have them with adults. So we need to, you know, build both.
You know, I think one of the hardest thing for students uh before and after COVID nineteen started was the fact that we were always on such a tight schedule. And we always had things going on every day, so we never really had time to talk about things that are going outside of the school. Um, within maybe our community or within our nation or country, uh, country or, yeah, um. And so I think hopefully we do have time now, or that that is something that we are trying to implement or making time for. Um, thank you. Um, the last thing I really, I want to touch on really quickly, um, before I'm done is the emotion, the emotional wellbeing of students. I know we keep talking about it, but I think it's still such an important thing that I'll bring it up again. Um, when I was talking with students before, they, um, in the last few weeks, they said that they hadn't heard of any resources. Um, where they could, that that would help with their emotional wellbeing on throughout the summer. So I think if we could find a way, um. To make that a bigger deal, to make it more exposed, uh, so more students can hear about it, um, can reach out to it. I think that would be, that would be a good idea. But I think just overall, just being mindful that students have emotions. Um, and especially with all this change and right now I feel especially just nobody, no student really knows what's going to happen for the year. And I think that alone is really stressful. Um, especially for seniors who are trying to figure out what's going to happen for college. I think just being mindful and aware that emotions are a thing and that, yeah, that 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 needs to be taken care of. So thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Vasquez Simula. Trustee Panas?
Um, thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I'd like to thank all the trustees uh for their comments. Um, that's President Hernandez Jarvis, I certainly can't agree, disagree with anything you said. And I just want to like. I am just extremely, extremely leery about bringing our neediest students, our foster homeless, language learners. Low-income special ed students together at our student support hubs. Um, and I know that was conceived in equity, but I just see, to me, I. I just feel like we're putting them in harm's way and these are the people who have the least access to medical care. The fewest options in general, and I I just, I am so uncomfortable about that. I, and I I didn't say it before, but I want to make it really clear that I don't think we should be bringing kids back. On August seventeenth, and I think it's going to be like a long time after August seventeenth when we should be bringing kids back because it's. I'm worried about them and just as worried about our staff, so. Um, you know, risking a child or family's or staff's life should not be a choice for us, but you know, we're stuck with that, so we have to do whatever we can to protect those lives. We have to exhaust all our options to protect our most underserved. And I, you know, to the extent we have, I'm just. Thinking during while the people are talking, like, you know, I'm still hearing about people who have to pay for their internet access and like, just like, we're not. Because we're in distance learning, all of a sudden they have these new expenses and I just don't know if we can find a way to to pay for that, but. I just feel so much for these people, like they. Because we're in distance learning, they have all these new expenses that they have to pay. Um, and I had one last note, Mr. Duffy, I. I know that the Berkeley School volunteers have done a lot of work around using uh volunteers in the COVID world and. Reaching out to them, um, might be a good idea because I've seen some really good stuff coming out. And so I'd just like to thank everyone for the conversation tonight.
Thank you, trustee Panas. Trustee Cuevas?
Uh, no further comment. Thank you. I think we've kind of all said the same thing at this point.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Trustee Phillips?
Uh, just a, a few quick comments. Um, one, as we move into, I'm going to take off the trustee hat and put on the lawyer hat. And I do civil rights, uh, most of the time, so I'm going to put on the civil rights lawyer hat, right? Um, we're the school district. So people look at us sometimes in a warm and fuzzy way, um, but we are also frankly the government, right? Um, even though people don't think of us that way, we are. Um, and as we create these uh Zoom classrooms, or we have already started doing it. Um, we are, uh, actually looking, uh, the government right now has a, uh, the opportunity in a way that it has never had before. Uh, to actually look in the homes all across America. So wherever there are schoolchildren, um. On Zoom, there are literally government workers looking into their homes. And I know, um, that is less of an issue for some people, but it is a privacy issue. Uh, so one of the things that I would like us to to do, um, is to really push for. Uh, our families to know what their privacy rights are because we're basically videotaping the insides of their homes uh through the week. Um, and uh, for the families who are on Zoom, it would be great for them to actually put up that screen. Um, where it's the static load, like the static screen like trustee Cuevas has, so we can't actually see what's behind trustee Cuevas. We just see that video screen. And I really think that that's what our families need to be doing. Uh, and I think that's what families across America need to be doing because the government. Uh, and I'm not trying to sound like a conspiracy theorist or anything like that, but I do civil rights work, uh, do civil liberties work, the government. Shouldn't really just be videotaping the inside of people's home. That's what's happening in this new Zoom environment. So I would like some discussion around that for our families and how they could alleviate some of that, even if it's just putting up the screen. Uh, like trustee Cuevas has. Uh, the other thing that I want to point out very quickly is. Um, our school district stretches over five cities, right? And it has multiple unincorporated areas. And so I know we have people uh in communities within our district because it's so geographically diverse. That have been affected by COVID nineteen differently. And so trustee Cuevas, when she was talking, she just listed a number of schools. She just laid them out, right? And those schools are are in the community or we're moving to wards and wards that I live in, right? And and that ward, uh, that community, um, is the same community that the county health officer just talked to us about. When we look at spikes around the county, we look at Baypoint, we look at Richmond, we look at San Pablo. And that Richmond-San Pablo quarter, uh, frankly, where I live, uh, is a hotspot for the county. So if you live in, you know, Hercules, for example, or if you live in El Cerrito, for example, it may not be a, not, it may not. It it's not affecting uh you in the same way that's affecting other areas. And so you need to remember, or would hope you remember, right? Like you want to others, that there are communities within this school district. Um, and that Richmond-San Pablo quarter, that is a hotspot for the entire county. Um, and if we put those families in additional harms way, um, that's, that, that's not okay. And so I just want folks to remember, your, your, your particular community might not be a hotspot, but there. Is a hotspot for our entire county here. And then the last thing I would like to say. Um, President Hernandez Jarvis, you asked about the, the twenty ninth uh being our, our plan possibly being done by then. Um, if it's not, um, I I just want to 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 think about the idea of pushing the clock back on the start of school. And if we are going to end up doing that anyway, then. You know, our families, they have to plan and they have to plan around the decisions that we make on when school is going to open or not. And if we're going to have to push it back so we can actually do this distance learning thing, right? We should tell them as soon as possible, you know, not two weeks before the seventeenth. Uh, because then they have to scramble to figure out what uh they're going to do. And so I I really think. Um, and the twenty ninth is like two weeks before the seventeenth and it may not be done. And Mr. Duffy said it may not be done either. I really think we really have to look at pushing back. Um, and if we're going to do that, it needs to be done as soon as possible because. Families have to plan. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Lada?
Yes, I have to say is that we have a hundred and fifty-six, oh, a hundred and fifty-four participants online right now. And I would like us to respect their time. It's nine forty-five and we still have a huge agenda to go on. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lada. I have no further comments, so it seems that we have reached the end of this item. Thank you to everybody who's tuning in at home and everybody who is listening, um. To to know what's going on and I I think every board member and staff member for the work that you've done. Uh, to ensure that we make the best decision for kids during this time especially. So thank you, everybody. And and with that, we wrap up our first discussion item and because that one. Uh, was right after public comment, we're going to our consent calendar now and. Uh, I want to know if there's a motion to to move that because we already had C two, C four, C five pulled as well as C eleven and C twelve.
Adam, chair, like to move the remaining items on consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Motion made by trustee Cuevas, seconded by trustee Panas. Can we please take a vote, beginning with our student trustee?
Dawa, yes?
Panas, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Lada, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to approve the cons, the remaining consent calendar items that were not pulled. Up next, we are an item D, committee communication, beginning with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, while that's coming up, um, again, we have been reporting on sort of. Distance learning from the spring every week and now we're shifting obviously to moving uh that to. Planning for the fall. So there's some of the things traditionally we had in our COVID update that are now in here. Uh, and we can move this forward. Um, so I think we've covered so much in the last three and a half hours. Uh, that, you know, some of this might be redundant and I apologize for that. Uh, but we did hold the Friday night town hall. Um, this is the first part of the stakeholder input and the framework is complete. Um, now we're moving obviously into the the finer details. Just wanted to make mention, I got out to our summer graduation today. I saw trustee Phillips out there. Um, I don't know if any other trustees came by afterwards. Um, but, you know, all the families who are out there, students who needed those last additional credits to graduate. Um, and, you know, just wonderful. Thank you to the staff and the families and the students. And I'm I'm glad we were able to put something together for these students to congratulate them. Um, our summer offerings continue to be ongoing. Um, we've wrapped up a very small literacy. Um, program for our rising fifth and sixth grade students and I'll hope to have at our next board meeting a summary of that, which was, been great. Um, we offered some ongoing content and we had, uh, you know, fourteen hundred families sign up for just four hundred spots. So we're looking at how to increase those offerings. And as some of you know, uh, a part of the situation with the state budget uh for next year is that they have. Uh, moved away from the LCAP requirement for next year, but they have. Asked us to submit a plan called a learning continuity plan with some specific asks, and that's due the thirtieth of September. Not going to get into that today, but just to put it on your radar, we will get schools open and build toward this learning continuity plan where we're able to share with the state. All of the things that we're doing, which, you know, none of it really will be new. We've done a really good job of trying to be aggressive about making sure. Learning is continuous, uh, and we'll share what we're doing with the state, um, through that plan. Um, you know, this just came up, but I really, I I wanted to make sure that this, we we got to show this slide of just how much participation. We had, um, in helping us get to this reopening framework, helping us. Define the priorities that we want in the plan. So you see fifty-three task force members, ninety-eight subcommittee members. You know, thirty-three hundred student surveys, seven thousand parent, thousand staff. You know, focus groups, three thousand people in the town hall. So I think we've, you know, we can, we're going to continue to try to get more, but. Um, a lot of work there from a lot of people. Upcoming, um, as we've just spent a few hours talking about filling the opening of school framework with the detailed planning and negotiations. Two coming board meetings. We're still working on staffing, budget development on the side, making sure we've got a teacher for every classroom. Um, you know, finalizing any last administrative positions. And I did want to say, you know, we have heard uh from Mr. Phillips uh and others who've asked us about our. Us, our online learning tools, um, and knowing that we're going to go into distance learning for an even longer period of time. I am going to work with our staff to just, you know, make sure, um, we have the proper. Student online assessment tools, including diagnostic and adaptive assessments and. Including diagnostic and adaptive assessments and tools. So I'm going to ask our staff to look at the tools we have. And begin to bring in any vendors that we might want to talk about to enhance that. So I will provide an update about that process. In terms of just making sure we've got the technology we want, especially if we see ourselves in extended distance learning. So I'll, I'll keep you updated on that. I wanted to just do a quick update on the distance learning nonparticipation of the 70, 753 students. That we uh, felt did not attend anything through the spring. So we started an outreach program through our SCOWs. Calling, contacting, reaching out in multiple different ways and home visits. And I wanted to, to share on the next slide, uh, next couple of slides, a little bit more of. What we've learned. And I think if Ms. Logan is here, she can also help share a little bit about um, this data. But you can see, um, first, we reduced that number to 507 students. Just due to school outreach, once school was out, being much more aggressive. Through school-based staff trying to track down those students. And then through the summer, we continued that work and that 507. Has dropped down to 112 students. And you can see the breakup of the 112 students there. By ethnicity and race that we still haven't tracked down. And we started some home visits uh, late last week and early into this week. To track down those 112 students. And you'll see here, um, a little bit what we learned about those students was 68. Saw internet as a main barrier. Many of them had moved. 112 were flagged for more support, given the complexity of their case. Many parents uh, expressed shame, frustration, confusion when trying to engage with distance learning. Some parents communicated, they didn't know how to find teachers when they lost the contact information. And many parents were unaware their child was not participating because they saw them on their Chromebooks. So all sorts of different comments we're using to help us think through, obviously, and this goes to the last three hours of discussion. But what's going to be in place um, for these students? And then you'll see obviously taking those points and talking about what we need to do going forward. So, you know, there are many opportunities for us to get better. Many opportunities for us to think about what we weren't able to do during those three months when we were. In much more of a crisis mode and put those things in place going forward. So I really thank the school community outreach workers, Marin Trujillo and his team for helping us get after that this summer. That's my report for tonight. I know we had a big report on obviously the opening of school. So I won't take up too much more time uh, this evening. I know we've got other committee reports. So thank you for allowing me to share that with you.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. And if I may also request, uh, if you can please have staff post. Uh, your superintendent reports because I think that they would be useful to have them. Put in the, with the agenda as a, as a, you know, material. There's an attachment to, to this item. And you know, I would also request that we have follow-up and, and an update on the Friday memo. In terms of the 112 students that we still need to reach.
Sure.
Thank you. And so the next item that we have is standing reports. And after this one, we, we will need to extend our meeting. Thank you.
I know we did have, uh, I think we had a card in from Mr. Gosny about his.
Yes. We currently have Don Gosny and Jose De Leon at the moment. If we're prepared to start, Don Gosny.
Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm really proud of myself tonight. I was involved with two Zoom meetings at the same time and I did my own income taxes. And I did miss a word of what you, you guys said and the other people. Okay, but I know that's what, not why you stuck around tonight. You know, the citizens bond oversight committee met at their regular monthly meeting just two days ago. While we welcomed our new members, we bade farewell to another member. Vanessa Hill has served us extremely well these past two years as the parent or guardian representative. Vanessa's expertise in finances made her a valuable asset on our audit subcommittee and the annual report committee. I tried to convince her to reapply, but she needs to put her family first. Like many members of the district's committees and the general public, as a parent and a member of the CBOC. Vanessa was frustrated with the district and the district's leadership. We will miss Vanessa and continue our search for a replacement. Just a reminder to the board and the throngs of fan watching at home. We still need volunteers to serve on the CBOC to oversee the bond program. If you'd like to learn more or to receive an application, please feel free to call me at 510-685-2403. Or email me at Don Gosny, D-O-N-G-O-S-N-E-Y at Comcast.net. Like most communities, the West County community demands oversight of their nearly $2.4 billion investment in rebuilding our educational facilities. By the time the interest is paid on the voter-approved bonds. Each and every member of this community, whether they're a voter, a non-voter, a taxpayer, or even small children. They still get to dig into their pockets for nearly $14,000 each. To pay for the schools needed to house the young people of West Kenny, West County, as you make every effort to educate them. With that kind of an ongoing expenditure, it should be easy to understand why the people investing so heavily might demand oversight. Oversight is merely a set of checks and balances. And when everyone is conducting their affairs honestly and above board, there is nothing to fear. The WCCUSD Board of Education has always conducted their affairs openly and publicly. Individual members of the community might disagree with the decisions of the board or might feel that the board isn't listening. But their business is conducted openly and the public is always encouraged to lobby for their preferences. Even if their lobbying is limited to just 60 seconds. Even though the board approves the nominations of the CBOC members. The CBOC's responsibility isn't to represent the board, it's to stand up for the people of West County, to be their eyes, ears, and voices. During the recent campaign for Measure R, district staff routinely use the CBOC as an assurance to the voters. That this set of checks and balances was in place and they could rest assured that their investment is safe. The volunteer members of the CBOC take this responsibility seriously. At our CBOC meeting last Monday, we had a 67-minute discussion about the need for an updated facilities master plan. One of the 112 recommendations included in the forensic accounting investigation was that the FMP should be updated every five years. Even though the FMP was drafted in 2015, it wasn't until 2016 that it was approved. The lengthy discussion by the CBOC focused on making sure that the board knew that people were looking at the calendar. To ensure that the update was progressing so the finalized update would be useful, could be useful. Could be used before the Measure R bond funds were allocated. Several members of the CBOC also expressed their continuing disappointment in the district. For their failure to be extremely explicit when it comes to bond measure ballot language. So the public would know that some exactitude on, with some exactitude on how the funds would be spent. I suppose there will always be differences of opinion on whether the district should be allowed latitude about how funds might be spent 10 to 12 years. After the bond measure was passed, but as chair of the CBOC, I want to be sure that it's not just my own opinions. That are reported to the board and the public. Just as the board, board may not agree on every issue, every viewpoint needs to be heard. Another issue of concern is the normally scheduled joint meeting between the board and the CBOC. That per board policy is held in the third quarter of the year. You might recall that we had a joint meeting scheduled for the end of March, but because of the shelter in place orders at the time, the meeting was canceled. When the board recently approved their schedule for the rest of the year, the September joint meeting must have fallen off that calendar. I recently sent the board and senior staff a formal letter asking that they work with the CBOC to schedule a September meeting. That invitation has so far gone unanswered, but it still stands. These joint meetings are an important tool where the two bodies and the public that we all represent can have discussions on the critical issues of the day. And without the looming clock that shuts down our end of the discussions when we come before you at your meetings. As another reminder, I've extended an invitation several times this year to meet with me individually. So I might learn more about your issues with the CBOC and the oversight of the bond program. I extend that invitation again, just because the board could not come to an agreement with the CBOC when we proposed the amendments to board policy 7214.2. This didn't mean that the problems went away. And lastly, that same board policy says that the board will have a liaison at our meetings. We'd love to have a representative of the board that wants to work with us, attend our meetings and, and attend our meetings in a collaborative partnership. As another reminder, our next meeting will be hosted at 2:00 PM on Monday afternoon, August 10th. Everybody is welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gosny. Mr. Walton, do we have any other reports from committees?
We have one more from Jose De Leon.
Thank you.
Mr. De Leon, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members. Actually, good night, board members, Mr. Duffy. First of all, uh, thank you very much for the work that was put forth thoughtfully in creating this plan. I also want to publicly recognize all the administrators. That took up, um, along with teachers that took up their, their summer to be part of this ongoing project. And to remind that communications will be the most important part of all this. And to make sure that the sites understand, um, so they can explain to their community. When they get asked directly, what is the next steps on, on, in this distance learning? Even though uh, we are, are sometimes on sites, uh, sometimes working from home. We're always making sure that we can communicate with our teachers classified. And our parents and students. So, uh, once again, thank you administrator for the work you've done in collaboration with the different subcommittees and task force. And um. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Leon.
Uh, trustee, uh, President Hernandez Jarvis. Can I just, two quick things still in the standing reports. I mentioned that the home visits started this week, but they're actually starting next week. So I wanted to clarify that. I know our folks have worked hard to get agreement around what that would look like. So I just wanted to make that clear. And um, also I know Mr. Gosny has requested uh, response about joint meeting. And Mr. Gosny, I'll just tell you, uh, I, it's on the list. I owe you that call to set that meeting up. So um, we will get to it and I, I apologize, uh, but um, it's, it's there and we will make it happen.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. Mr. Walton, do we have any further committee reports?
We do not. That concludes our committee reports.
Thank you. So board members, I would like to, to know if we um, are ready to extend the meeting. We have one more committee communication item. And then we have three discussion items. And then we have four action items plus the five items that were pulled from the consent calendar. So I would say that if we have another hour and a half, we may be able to get through all of those before that, hopefully.
Uh, I'll move, we extend our meeting for 90 minutes until um. That would be 11:30.
I second that motion. Thank you, trustee Panas. Can we please take a vote?
Dawa, yes?
Panas, yes.
Uh, I will be voting yes, but note I may have to log off at 11 o'clock. So let's see how much we can get done. Yes.
Thank you.
Phillips, yes?
Laura, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to extend the meeting uh, for 30 extra minutes. So we will. Go till 11:30. Thank you. Our next item is D3, in memory of members of the school community.
Thank you.
Welcome.
As we often do, the district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away. And we request the community submit names to reported as a regular part of each agenda. Kennedy High School graduate and past board trustee and president Randall Randy Enos recently passed away. Mr. Enos and his three younger siblings all graduated from Kennedy High School. Where his mother was president of a large and involved PTA. Randy was the center on the football team and catcher on the baseball team, both athletic and social. He graduated from Contra Costa Community College and UC Berkeley to become a social science teacher. As well as social science department chair and AP instructor at Kennedy in the then Richmond Unified School District in January 1970. He coached football and baseball and was joined by his father, John Enos, a Richmond High social science teacher in coaching duties. He served as principal at Gompers Alternative Education High School and Portola Middle School. As well as in positions of assistant principal. After retirement, Mr. Enos continued service to the education community with a four-year term. As trustee of the West Contra Costa Board of Education from 2012 to 2016. The Enos family demonstrates generations of commitment to education and betterment of students with his father, wife, and daughter. All serving as educators in this district. I'd like to say on a personal note, uh, Mr. Enos was part of the group of trustees who hired me in 2016. He was president when I came here and I got to know him very well. I fondly remember him driving me around and proudly touring me of the district and his favorite spots. And taking me to lunch at Porta Mex and sharing just how enthused he was about the district and all of the students here. He loved the kids. And I just have such fond memories of him and he would come into the office after his presidency and talk. And talk to me about what was on his mind and share thoughts and questions. And um, I really, really will miss uh, Mr. Enos. And uh, my thoughts go out to the family and the friends uh, of Mr. Enos. So let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for sharing um. About Mr. Enos and the impact that he had in our community and in the district and all of the lives of students and of staff that he touched. And just the impact that he had in, in, you know. Helping you become part of this community. And I, I know that there's also board members who, who knew him personally. So I just want to also extend my condolences to his family and to, to board members who had, um. You know, a personal and, and a collaborative relationship with him. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the family will be very appreciative of that.
Thank you. Board members, uh, yes, trustee Phillips?
Uh, I just wanted to just take a couple of seconds, uh, and just publicly offer my condolences to the family. Randy was a, a booster. I mean, there's no real other way to put it. He was a booster for the district. He loved the district. And he loved the district because this, you know, was his home. So I do want to publicly acknowledge the service um, that he rendered. Service that he rendered as a professional for pay and service that he rendered as a volunteer because he did both. He was a fine man and he is a, a big law to our community. And I just want to say here and now that I, I do appreciate him for what he did for the district. But also that he was really uh, an open person. Uh, I remember the first time I ran for school board, uh, sitting down and talking with him and, and Virgil Weeks. And uh, he was willing, he was one of those people who, um, I guess he never stopped teaching, right? Because he was willing to sit down with you and talk with you and, and work things uh, through with you. And that just goes to show, you know, how big of a person, um, you know, he really was. So thank you. For his work, for his, his service, for his time. And I want to thank his family for sharing him with us.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Before we move on to the next item, I just want to make sure that I offer this space and time for any other. Before we move on to the next item, I just want to make sure that I offer this space and time for any other trustees who would like to also share any words. Thank you, trustees. Thank you. So we are going to continue now with our second discussion item. Item E2, Community Connectivity Assessment.
May I suggest that for each of these three items, number two, three and four, we propose a maximum of 15 minutes if we can get through it. Number three might be 20, but I will be happy to keep time and let you know where we are. We think we can do number two in 15 minutes at the most, so happy to keep time and I'll let you know where we are in 15 minutes.
Thank you for the suggestion, Mr. Duffy. I think that makes sense. So let's begin with item E2 with a 15-minute timer. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So we wanted to bring to you this evening a discussion around the status of our digital divide in our community and our strategies that we are pursuing and looking to pursue both on a short-term and long-term basis. So I'm going to bring up first a slide deck. Bear with me a sec. So, status of the digital divide in our community. What you see before you on the screen right now is a map of our students and our schools. So our schools are the blue dots and our students are the black dots. You'll notice that the black dots are concentrated primarily in the Richmond and San Pablo area. This is data that we've collected over the course of the spring as families and then staff on behalf and community organizations on behalf of families indicated that families did not have home internet and needed support with a hotspot. We continue to collect this data even as we provided hotspots so that we could really get a sense of where are families who have the most need when it comes to home internet. Again, you can see the concentration in the San Pablo-Richmond area, although the dots are certainly throughout our five cities. So in terms of what we have been doing about it on the short term is hotspots. We distributed 1,795 hotspots to students where, when we learned that there was need. Those hotspots came to us through, primarily through the Sprint 1 Million Grant that we became recipients of several years ago. And through that grant, we've been able to equip many students with hotspots. That said, we, we think that, that it is still a good short-term solution. Unfortunately, the Sprint 1 Million program as a grant is sunsetting. So, as many of you are aware, Sprint and T-Mobile have merged. The Sprint 1 Million philanthropic arm will be sunsetting. We will continue to be able to use the hotspots that we have in our possession, that students have in their possession. We just aren't able to acquire new and additional. So, one of the items that you had before you this evening on consent was the purchase of an additional 2,000 hotspots through T-Mobile. Those are not through a grant. Those we are purchasing, the hotspots themselves, we've been able to acquire at no cost for the device, but there is a monthly service charge. We were fortunate to receive through CDE and a generous donation from Google, three months free. So that brought the monthly down, so we are committing to a year of 2,000 hotspots unlimited data at about $15 per hotspot per month. It adds up. It's almost $400,000 for 2,000 hotspots. We believe with those 2,000 hotspots, we'll be able to meet the need right now. However, we know, given the economic situation, based on the pandemic, that the number will grow and it's, it's difficult to forecast exactly how, how much it will grow. I also wanted to highlight, thank you trustee Phillips for bringing up the hotspot need. Certainly, in terms of solutions, I want to be sure families know that we do have hotspots in our possession right now. So if you need home internet access for next year, please let us know right now. You can call us, the numbers on the screen. That's our IT office. We're open throughout the summer and we can arrange to get a hotspot to you. So please let us know and we are happy to quickly support with that. Additionally, in terms of phones, the ability to use phones to connect with learning and for students to connect with teachers, Google Meet and Zoom does have the call-in function available in every single session. So that is certainly an option for families, although I do want to say that we want to support families and students to every degree possible to make sure that students can can experience and engage in the learning 100% through the internet with video. So again, please reach out if you need a hotspot. We also, in terms of short-term solution, continue to work with the city of Richmond to pursue potential partnership opportunities. The latest looks like the ability to install our superspots, which we were gifted from T-Mobile Education Superhighway on the bookmobiles, which could be parked around town and then obviously observing social distance. So again, we believe these short-term solutions are good. They will meet the need right now. However, they don't allow us to fundamentally solve the problem. And, and I recognize that we as a school district are also not in a position in and of ourselves to solve this problem 100%. However, we know that students having reliable internet connection is key for their learning in this time of the pandemic and distance learning. So we need a cost-effective solution that will get all of our students reliably connected to high-speed broadband for the long term, which is what we wanted to discuss with you this evening, the long-term solution. We believe there are, there are three different possible solutions that we could explore and wanted to get your thinking and perspective on these ideas. The first is around advocacy. The second is a community Wi-Fi solution, which would need to be built out. And the third is a procurement solution. So in terms of advocacy, the bill that seems the most sort of probable and backed by the Schools Health Libraries Broadband Coalition, known as Shelby, is calling on Congress to provide $5.25 billion in one-time funding for schools and libraries to provide home broadband via e-rate. So we receive e-rate funds right now, but we're only allowed to use them for our schools, not beyond. This would actually allow us to extend those dollars, use those funding to extend broadband into homes beyond our schools. So our, our suggestion, our proposed next steps would be to bring a resolution to the next board meeting and in partnership with Supervisor Joya's office, who is also on board, to support this from an advocacy standpoint. So wanted to get your thoughts on that. Secondly, which we'll explore a little bit more in-depth this evening, is the possibility of building out a community Wi-Fi solution. Three possible approaches. I'm not going to speak more on this right now. We'll bring in an expert that can share more about what this could look like and what it would take. And then the third option is a procurement option, which we are exploring. And this would be a way of actually procuring internet that we would pay for families directly. So our strategy here is how can we showcase the amazing ITA academies that Kennedy, Danza and El Cerrito High to bring in business to help us close the divide and support our CTE programs. So I wanted to thank specifically trustee Laura for helping us to put this back on the radar and really begin reinvigorating our Business to Education Executive Board. And we'll bring an update about this possible procurement solution to a future board meeting. So again, high level, this is not our work alone. We cannot do it alone. Partnerships are key. We want to bypass politics and connect our students to the most cost-effective long-term solution. And I want to thank all of our partners that already exist in this work. I could just take a moment to call out the Cities of Richmond and San Pablo, Supervisor Joya's office, trustee Laura, Mr. Whittier and the Whittier Foundation, the Sprint 1 Million Project that's been so generous with us and our students. T-Mobile and their potential new project 10 million, which may be a new program to bring affordable hotspots to families. The ITA Academy, specifically Dr. Moore and Ms. Perez and the students. Leslie Reckler for her support with letter writing and grant writing through the PLC. Education Superhighway, which is a nonprofit advocacy group. The generous donations of Netgear, AT&amp;T, Google, CDE and Go Public Schools, our partners in advocacy research. So I'm going to stop there and turn it over to an expert in the field that we've brought in to help us assess, what would it look like? What would it take to potentially build out a community Wi-Fi solution? So Kyle, are you, are you with us?
Yes, Tracy, I am.
Great. So I will pull up the document, but you can go ahead and get started.
Thank you, board members and staff of West Contra Costa Unified School District. It's an honor to be here tonight. I just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to present to you guys some community Wi-Fi assessments that we found for you guys. A little bit about who we are. Infinity Communications is a firm located in Bakersfield, California that specializes in technology consulting for the K-12 market. We specialize in e-rate, but we also design large network wireless and metro wide-area networks and wireless networks for communities. What we found and what we were tasked with was finding the most equitable solution to provide the greatest coverage and connectivity to the area of most need and moving out towards beyond and from that. We were informed that you guys did pass Measure R and that most of the monies to be used for this would be joined from Measure R along with some other funding sources. So I'll jump right into it. We have a couple of different options that we found based on some of our scenarios and assessments that we did. We did a very high-level assessment. We wanted to give you a very high-level cost assessment for what things look like and what the different options available to you are and what that kind of looks like on a rollout. Scenario one being LTE or Long-Term Evolution. In the, it's called Band 41. It's what your cellphone uses on a regular basis to have communication with the internet. Your ISP service provider being Sprint, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever. That long-term evolution connectivity provides you a rather fast speed. If you've noticed, some people are able to conduct Zoom meetings and whatnot from their phone with limited latency and acceptable connectivity. So the district would, in this scenario, they would install towers on certain strategic campuses throughout the district. And that would provide an LTE signal out to student hotspots. Since the school, the district has already purchased hotspots, the hotspots that you currently have, upon further investigation, obviously, could be used and a SIM card swap could be put in there. That would then apply this to your district LTE service. So there would be no, potentially no purchase of additional equipment beyond the radio towers. There are, however, licenses that are needed to provide this type of service. Currently, there are no available licenses for purchase. Licenses come in in a wave and they go up for auction and in, not yearly, but I believe it's every three or four years they go up for auction. There's rumor that later this year, some of that LTE bandwidth will be up for auction in your geographical area. So while this particular solution doesn't fit you 100% right now, today, towards the end of the year, if the LTE spectrum does become available for purchase, this could be a viable option for the district. What it does provide in this Band 41 is the highest level of mobility available to your users. Because you're using those hotspots, you're able to use it in your home, you're able to use it in your vehicle. You're able to use it from the library or Starbucks. Wherever you're located at, as long as you have cell signal in that location, you're able to use it there. So, the coverage is fantastic. It doesn't require too much on the front side, but it does require that license, which is the main prohibitive event for the district at this point, because while you do own RF signal, you do not own a Band 41 license. So there is potential to lease that, but again, that is an ongoing, a reoccurring cost to the district to lease that. And with further investigation, we can find out what that cost would be to the district. But for these purposes and the purpose of this assessment, we didn't dive that far into it to make contact with the available lease holders. The, some of the downturns to this, like I said, are the licensing and the cost of Band 41 equipment is considerably more expensive than the other solutions that we're going to bring in. However, it's not the most expensive. So some of the costs associated with this are a connection management system that manages all of the devices, what they're able to connect to. The school site equipment, we estimated approximately 30 sites across the district would be sufficient to provide adequate coverage. There are user endpoints which are required, we estimated around 4,000. Currently, Tracy mentioned that there's about 3,000 students that need to have connectivity on day one. We went with 4,000 just to be on the safe side as times have changed since the, the last time that the packets were sent home for home evaluation. And then, of course, there's always the labor cost to install a project like these. Our estimated total for a one-time installation fee for this project is just slightly over $5 million for initial investment and then an annual maintenance and recurring costs of about $50,000 for your backbone equipment, which would be the equipment installed on the campuses. And then new equipment as it's required. As we're all aware, kids have butter fingers sometimes and so they may drop a device and it no longer works. So the replacement of those devices as required is right around $150 apiece. So that would be your annual maintenance cost. In scenario two, where we evaluated the use of what's called the citizens broadband radio service. What this is, is it's a private LTE network that is free. It's called Band 48. The license itself is free and regulated by the FCC. So as soon as you register your license with the FCC, no one else is allowed to use that license in the area. It's a very wide-band spectrum and it is not available for commercial use. So AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, any of those, they're not allowed to use this spectrum. They're regulated to Band 41, which is our previous scenario. But Band 48 is specifically reserved for citizens, non-commercial use. So this is where we believe that Band 48 can really benefit the district as there's no cost for a license. Now, the big differentiation between these two is while private LTE is still a long-term evolution system, it does not support the mobility factor that we see in the Band 41. Unfortunately, it's more beneficial if that user device is stationary. So in this scenario, what we've done is we've moved out and we've included, I believe, you could scroll down just a little bit, Tracy. There we go. We included about 54 sites from the district would require some type of equipment to be mounted on it. And what we're able to do from this is the minimum range that we will get out of this is a little over half of a mile from the campus. And the maximum range that we get is five miles, based on equipment that's installed. So this provides considerable reach for some of the areas out in the Pinole and Rodeo areas, El Sabron, areas out where there may not be as many students that require connectivity, but those that are out there may not be as close to the campus as they might be in Richland or San Pablo. So we will be able to provide them connectivity from each campus. The benefit of this solution, there's no license required. The coverage is ample and sufficient and line of sight is not required. Line of sight becomes a big deal in the next solution that we bring up, so we just kind of include this in here. This also provides an opportunity to partner with local businesses. So because of the way that this system operates, each campus emits a large radius of connectivity. Local businesses could potentially partner with you guys to provide connectivity in their place to bring in patrons into their place of business and then increase their foot traffic as well. Caveats to this are while coverage and distance are excellent, speeds are great, but farther from the school, the worse the connection will be. That's just the falloff from radio frequency. There's nothing we can do about that. But that's why we include multiple sites to provide multiple rings and overlapping coverage. There is the lack of mobility that we discussed. The system tends to work better when it's a stationary device. This system tends to work better when it's a stationary device, not a mobile device. And then the installation of equipment at a business partner or an exterior requires lease agreements. We've worked with several other school districts in the past through these lease agreements with legal counsel. So while it is, it is a more time-consuming effort, it's not impossible. It's definitely doable. So with this system, we have the same kind of setup as the previous ones. We have connection management, school site equipment, and then the user endpoints. This solution comes in roughly about $600,000 less at $4.4 million. Annual maintenance is roughly about the same and the wireless endpoints are the same as well. The final scenario that we went through is what we consider wireless broadband to the home. In this solution, we put a point-to-point connection device on each school campus and a point device out in the community, be it on a light pole or maybe on a user's home. And that device requires line of sight back to the school site. You must be able to see the path of travel for the information because if you try to send a wireless signal through a building, it doesn't usually work out too well on a wireless spectrum. On LTE spectrum, it's okay, but in a wireless spectrum, it just doesn't work. So the requirement for this is considerably more on the device side in the community. However, we're able to provide direct wireless access to each user's home. And so it differs in the fact that you're not having to have a device for each student, but that device is now installed somewhere out in the community and provides a wireless access radius to the students in that area. We find that these solutions tend to work better in high-density population areas, whether that's an apartment complex or something similar or condominiums, things of those natures, just a high-density population, a residential area. These provide a lot of coverage over a small area and with very good speeds and very good reliability. Benefits to this, again, no license is required for these. Coverage from the school site to the user is measured in kilometers. So we can actually go much farther, but it does require more devices to provide that area of coverage. Mobility is, if it's, if you have strategic partnerships, student can have access in more places than just their home or in the community area. The downsides and caveats to these are installation is required at the student's home or at a business partner's location. Line of sight is required. Mobility is limited to spaces that have agreed to provide connectivity or the student's home. And the cost, due to the increased number of devices required for this, the cost is nearly twice as much as what the cost for an LTE or a private broadband system is. Here we have the new equipment over a five-year cycle. One-time installation is about $1 million just for the equipment. And then the wireless access points that need to go out is about $7 million worth of access points. And then maintenance and wireless backbone is roughly the same as LTE, but the access points are more expensive. And I believe that should conclude a high-level assessment of what we've discovered and what some of our options for the district are. I'll go ahead and turn it back to Tracy. And if any of the board members have any questions, I will stick around and be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Kyle. And just really quick, if Dr. Wald, if you want to chime in briefly about potential financing.
So the whole goal is to find a way to end that digital divide. And so the idea is that you want to use one-time funds that are going to be long-term for that infrastructure. So we would be able to, based on how we've framed our measures, access bond funds, if that was a desire of the board, to do the installation, but not to buy the devices that are ongoing for the students. Those would have to be something that would be maintained in our operational budget. So that's the difference between the LTE and the Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi, our regular Chromebook devices automatically connect to it, but you have to pay more on the infrastructure side one time. If you go the LTE, you're going to be paying less on the installation, but you will have an ongoing set of devices that you're going to have to have that hotspot connection to make it work. But either of them moves towards our goal of taking care of that massive number of black dots so that our students have access.
Thank you. So that concludes our presentation. Would love to hear any comments from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Thank you to Kyle for presenting and to, you know, for just providing all this information. I think it's really useful and eye-opening. Before we have any discussion from the board or comments, do we have public comment, Mr. Walton?
There's no, there's one public comment from Kate Burkhart.
Thank you.
Ms. Burkhart? You can unmute.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Many years ago, there was a radio tower or a cell tower put on one of the campuses. And that prompted lots of discussion and about the dangers of having cell towers on campuses that would affect the students at that site and maybe neighbors around it. There's great controversy as to whether there's a potential of brain damage and all. And I don't know if there, it's ever been proven one way or the other, but the board did make an agreement at that time that there would never be cell towers put on a school site. I don't remember what the year was, but it was probably in the 90s, maybe 95-ish or something like that. But it did create a great controversy in the district because of the potential health hazard to developing brains and development of students. So for what it's worth, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. So board members, if anybody has any questions or comments, it is 10:38 and I would like to begin with a student trustee Vasquez Simula, followed by trustee Panas, trustee Cuevas, trustee Phillips, trustee Lada and myself.
I know we're short on time, so I'll pass up my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I've got just a few questions. So are the speeds comparable on the three different solutions?
So on the LTE side of things, they are what is considered broadband by the FCC. So the FCC considers broadband anything over 25 megabytes per second. Right now, Google has released a document stating that Google Meet, their version of Zoom, requires a minimum of four megabits per second. So the LTE, while it provides 25, is considered broadband, wireless broadband to the third option there. That provides more in the range of 300 megabits per second, which is considerably faster. Now granted, your LTE speeds, wireless speeds, all of that will depend on the number of users on the system at one time.
Okay, that leads into my second question. But do they all support the same number of users? Or, I mean, are you, how are you sizing them so they will support the same number of users? Or is there a limit on the number of users?
Currently, there's no limit on the number of users. We sized it based on the maps that we were provided by Ms. Logan and the IT department. So in the areas where we have a greater need for coverage and greater need for user capability and user speed, we did provide more of a blanket coverage of that area with multiple overlapping rings of coverage. In the more remote areas where we may only have one or two students that were farther out from the campus, we did not go and provide additional long-distance or higher-speed coverages. They were on standard, which should be, at this point, without further investigation, obviously, should be enough to provide them adequate speeds to produce content or do uploads and whatnot of homework.
Thank you. And if we were going to install these on campuses, I'm just wondering how high they need to be. And some of you said had to be, you said had to be line of sight. And also like how prominent are the antennas themselves?
So the antennas themselves are not very large. They're not, well, okay, let me back up. The scenario one antennas would be roughly the same size as you would see on a standard cellphone tower now because they are that Band 41 LTE signal. Now, if we were talking about the CBRS antennas from Band 48, those antennas are considerably smaller. Roughly 30 inches tall, eight inches wide, maybe six inches deep. They're not very large, but we would put four on a stand, creating a 360-degree radius pattern of that. But they would be mounted 30, 30 to 40 feet tall on a mast on the highest point on the campus, which is usually the multipurpose room or the gymnasium.
Okay, great. And we're assuming a service life of five years on the specimen?
We estimate five years. We've seen usually on a seven to 10-year scale of the availability, five years is that rough zone of, you know, how many birds have landed on it? How many people have tried to hit it with a golf ball, things like that.
Okay, and you seem reluctant, I can believe, like, to tell us what the cost of a license is. But I mean, those, these are all like by auction when the spectrum becomes available? So it could be... Do we need more than one license or just a single license?
It's a single, depends on your geographical area. Because you guys span five cities, we would have to do a little more research into that to see which licenses are available in which cities. And that's where the difficult part in that comes. If you require more than one license to cover the entire geographical area of the district, then yeah, we would have to go out for more than one type of license.
Okay, and are you comfortable like saying what license was at the last auction or you just want to completely stay away from that?
I'd rather steer clear of it because you're competing with some pretty big boys in the industry at that point. So that's where one of our considerations would be to potentially lease spectrum from somebody who may already own it. They've, they purchase it in large quantities and... Yeah.
Okay, so we could lease from somebody else. Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, trustee Panas, trustee Cuevas.
But just very quickly, a quick point of clarification. When you're talking about the option that has the frequency transmitter in it, you're not talking about radio frequency, are you?
No, ma'am. No, we're talking, it's an LTE frequency.
Okay.
The district does currently own RF frequency for handheld radios and two-way communication, but the LTE signal is on a different bandwidth than...
Okay. I just wanted to, I was a bit confused, but it did remind me that we haven't talked about the fact that we do have a radio, local radio capacity that we haven't thought about using yet.
The district, sorry, I apologize. When we did do research, the district does own currently seven or eight RF frequencies in the area.
And that's just something, Mr. Duffy, I hope the task force will think about too, that that might be a way to engage young children with children's programming or reading lessons. And it's as simple as telling folks, turn the radio on to this frequency. So that's the only thing I'll say about that. I'm going to go ahead and ingest more of the options and information that you presented. Thank you for your presentation on the broadband issue.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, obviously, we're past our time, but I think really as folks, Tracy, Kyle, laid out sort of options, we just want to make sure the board is okay with us continuing to bring advocacy forward, a resolution around advocacy and continuing to explore these options. And then potentially bringing back to the board, you know, a stronger recommendation of one or two of these for the board to decide on when we get to that place.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. And then trustee, I believe trustee Phillips is next.
Thank you very much. I do think this is something that we should do. We look around the country and we see people moving in this direction already. This is something that they're doing up in Seattle. I know that's a city and we're a school district, but I think that it's something that we really should do. I think to the extent that we can partner with our cities and with the county, I think that that would be fantastic because I think this is something that the entire community could benefit from, not just our students. As we do move forward with this, though, I think that we need to take into consideration that in our school community, we do have students who need to take advantage of something like this, but we also have staff who are disconnected and that this is something that should be able to benefit them as well. And that's certificated, but that's also classified. So I would like to keep all of those folks in mind. I know you're going to do some more research and bring some things back to us. I do like the idea of basically broadband Wi-Fi for everyone who is within our service area. And like I said, I would like to see us partner with our cities. So it ends up being for everyone. This is really a space where we could collaborate and do some good. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. And I just want to let everybody know that student trustee Vasquez Simula needed to head off right now. He let me know that he was really tired and that he has to get up early and take care of other stuff. So I just wanted to publicly let everybody know and thank him as well for his service and being present today. Trustee Lada?
No, just thank you, Ms. Logan and Mr. Delmore. This is very exciting. We're making progress and thank you very much for bringing it up.
Thank you. I also want to thank Ms. Logan as well as having Mr. Kyle here with us, explaining the differences between the options and just what we need to think about will be the best, most efficient and affordable in, you know, short-term and long-term plan that will benefit all kids during distance learning. So I thank you for being present here today, for explaining the options. And I look forward to learning more and making an informed decision on how to move forward. Thank you.
I'm bored. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you, Ms. Logan. And so, Mr. Duffy, right now, you don't need a specific directive from the board, correct?
No, I don't. And Ms. Logan, if you need anything specifically, just let us know. Otherwise, we'll move to our next item.
Thank you. So our next item is E3, parcel tax discussion.
Yep, Mr. Walton's going to introduce this one for us.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Good evening, Board President Hernandez Jarvis, members of the board, colleagues. The item before you is a discussion about a potential parcel tax measure on the November ballot. And as we, I believe it'll be coming up in a brief moment. Or...
Are you talking about the slide deck?
Yes, the slideshow, I'm sorry. It is in the folder. Or I can share it, Tracy. I can grab it real quick.
Give me a quick second. I'm almost there.
Okay.
If it's a presentation, can we have it added to our agenda? I don't know if it was, if, you know, I don't see it on there. So I would really like for us to have it so that the public can have access to it too.
We will definitely add it to the agenda.
Thank you.
But the, as I mentioned, the item before you is a discussion about the potential of putting a parcel tax on the November ballot. Next slide, please. Currently, property owners in the district pay 7.2 cents per square foot. That raises about $9.8 million to support students in this district. I would point out that senior citizens and disabled property owners are exempt from this levy. Next slide, please. A quick overview of the 2021 budget adoption experience. A quick, a quick overview of the 2021 budget adoption expenditures for that nine point eight million dollars. You can see it follows the, it follows the items that are outlined in the Measure T, parcel tax measure that was passed in 2016. One big piece of it is that the district did, in past years, come to an agreement to share the parcel tax with the charter schools in the district. That's about one point three million dollars. Next slide, please. Quick history of our parcel tax measures. Back in March 2004, Measure J actually failed the first time. The district came back in a special election in June of that same year and passed Measure D, Measure, which was a five-year measure. Measure D in November of 2008 was another five-year measure. Measure K lost in June of 2012, but Measure G did pass in November. And then Measure T, most recently in November of 2016. Next slide, please. So the, why we're asking for the possibility of a parcel tax on the November ballot, just real quickly, Dr. Wald has shared this slide several times. If you look down to the 2021, 22 projected revenues, you can see that the projected revenues are below the levels of 2016, 17. And that's projected for 21, 22, and 22, 23. Next slide. Another slide, Dr. Wald has also shared. The big number is that over two years, the next two years, total reductions could be thirty-two million dollars, and that's an estimate. So obviously, there's a large need and the parcel tax could go a ways towards helping fulfill that, fulfill that need. Next slide. Back in October of 2019, the district did contract with Godbe Consulting to do surveys regarding a bond and a parcel tax in either March or November. The slide in front of you shows the results for the parcel tax. If you look in the November 2020, it shows that we are short. Obviously, a parcel tax needs to have two-thirds vote, votes. And in October of 2019, it did, the, the polling showed that we would be, come up short by about 10%. Next slide, please. By the way, the previous slide indicated that that would be an ongoing parcel tax. The eight-year option limiting the parcel tax to eight years would have a little more support, but not much. We'd still be short by, by about seven or eight percent here as well. Fifty-eight point one percent of likely November voters would either definitely yes or, or probably vote yes on a parcel tax. Next slide. To be clear and in full transparency, this would be a second parcel tax that would have property owners paying about fourteen point four cents per square foot. Again, senior citizens and disabled property owners would be exempt. This would raise approximately twenty million dollars a year to support students in the district. Next slide. Thank you. Quick timeline, today's July 15th. This is an opportunity for the board to have a discussion. And then on August 5th, the board would, we would bring this back for the board to make a decision on whether or not to place this item onto the November ballot. Then August 7th would be the deadline to file any measures that would appear on the November ballot. There you can see the vote by mail, mailings from the county off, county registrar, the voter registration deadline, and the last day to request a vote by mail ballot. And November 3rd would be election day. Next slide. And that concludes the presentation. If there is, if the board has any questions or if there is a desire for discussion, now is the time. And we do have some public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, for the presentation. Can we please have the public comment?
Sure. The first speaker is Leslie Reckler. Ms. Reckler?
Hello. Good evening to everybody. Many of you know that I'm completely sports blind and I cannot match a ball to a sport. And, but I do know what a hail Mary pass, and this is, is, and this is a hail Mary pass where you're just going to fling this thing down the, the field and hope you hit a goal. Touchdown. There we go. However, that being said, we have only been able to pass these in presidential elections. We're in a presidential year. And if we're going to do it, this is the year that it needs to be considered. I will support you in this and I will try and get the Bayside Council of PTAs to support it as well, if that is something that you would be interested in. I do want to remind the board that we have a structural deficit. According to the American Institutes for Research, getting down to facts, published in 2018, based on two 2016, 2017 data, we are underfunded by at least ten thousand dollars per student to provide an adequate education, not even an exceptional one, just an adequate one. So that's twenty-six, you know, we're, we're deep in the hole. So once again, I, I do put an offer out to help you in the advocacy around this. I don't have a lot of, you know, I don't have a good feeling that it'll pass, but we, you know, you, you won't win it if you're not in it. Additionally, I'm hoping you'll ask some costs about how much it'll, you'll ask some questions about how much this would cost and how would it be funded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Walton, I couldn't hear you.
My apologies. The next public speaker is Don Gosny.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, if you don't, if you don't live here in Richmond, chances are you weren't paying attention to the social media sites here in Richmond that were right before the March 3rd election. I was spending all day and half the night, seven days a week, fielding the negative comments about Measure R. I mean, we're talking in the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them, and nobody was speaking in favor of it. What they, they don't trust the district, they don't trust the board, and they feel that they're being taxed to death. And so, you know, seeing this, this, another measure in the same year, you know, being passed, I think it's, a hail Mary is a being polite way of describing it. I think it's just a very tough sell. And you've got to ask yourself, who are you going to get to fund the campaign? At least on the parcel tax, you've got the, the building trades unions, you've got architects and engineers, trying to finance it. They don't have a skin in the game when it comes to, to a parcel tax. So where are you going to get the money to, to finance a campaign for something like that? These are things that we're going to have to consider. I support it. I mean, the need is unquestionable. And I, but it has nothing to do with it actually passing. I mean, even now, I probably spend eight or 10 comments a day that I'm, I'm trying to explain to them about where the money is going, who's spending the money, why it's, why it's going where it's going. People don't understand because we're not doing a good enough job of communicating what the board actually does. Because right now, I bet you you don't have nearly as many people at 11 o'clock listening to this as you would have had at 6:30. Because that's when you're trying to tell people about this. I say it's just not going to go over all that well. So before you, you take a vote on this at a later meeting, I just hope you, you think about it long and hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final public comments from Kate Burkhart. Ms. Burkhart?
Yes, thank you very much, Kate Burkhart, Richmond resident. You've got to remember that the big thing that is on the November ballot as far as propositions and so forth is the schools and community. I would hate to think that we would lose the schools and community by a small amount statewide just because of something like this. That is going to be a big issue. And the more you dig up as far as spending and asking people for money, the more they say, I'm not going to vote for any of that stuff. And the more they say that I don't trust the district and it's just going to get the, it's the camel getting his nose under the tent and the whole business. You just rile up everybody. Let us pass the schools and community first and maybe do a parcel tax another time. I will certainly vote for it, but I won't spend a lot of time on it. I've got to spend it on the schools and community. And so please consider the other things. And consider what El Cerrito did. They tried to pass the parcel tax and failed. And the thing that really got people angry with that one was that it was an undetermined timeframe. And people didn't like that part of it. And so there's a lot to be looked into before you put this on the ballot, right after Proposition R. And that was a miracle that that passed. So good luck, but think carefully before you do this. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. trustee Panas? Do you have any questions?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I noticed the fiscal impact in the PRC shows nine point eight million. And Mr. Walton, I thought you said fourteen million. Did I get that wrong revenue?
No, it would be nine point eight additional dollars. We want to be very clear and very transparent that this would be on top of the current parcel tax.
Okay.
The combined total would be almost twenty million dollars. However, it's only nine point eight million in additional revenue.
Okay, and as we're currently conceiving it, does it sunset?
Well, that's a, a question for the board to, to answer.
Okay, fine. I'll just note, like, we have a parcel tax committee, and I assume they haven't weighed in on this. But I mean, they have, I also know they haven't submitted the annual report for the last parcel tax. I don't know if Dr. Wald can tell us when we're expecting to see that annual report from the parcel tax committee? And I'm just wondering if there's been any talk among the parcel tax committee people about their feeling about this.
We have not talked with the parcel tax committee about their feelings on, on this item.
Okay. Well, I'll just say, I get, I, I know the parcel tax polled at fifty-six, fifty-seven percent last year. Perhaps the voters have changed their minds. What, what, do we know about what it would cost, what it's, cost us to put this on the ballot?
I believe it's one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. However, because we are, we have five board members up, board seats up for election, and it's a, it's a presidential prime, it's a presidential election, that cost is much lower than if it were, for instance, a special election or something like that. And I believe, if I recall correctly, and I'll have to make sure that I'm getting it right, that that's the combined total for the five and the, the five board seats as well as the parcel tax. Dr. Wald, do you have different information?
Each one would be separate. It gets billed total by each item you put on the ballot, and then they divide by the number of ballot items. We anticipate that we spent over two hundred and fifty thousand for Measure R. It's going to be less than that because there are more items. So we anticipated a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget for all ballot items, should we do a parcel and the five trustee areas.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, I'll just say, if we're going to pass this, it's going to be this year in the presidential election. And I'm kind of in favor of letting the voters say whether or not they're willing to, to pay this additional parcel tax. So I'm okay with bringing this forward to have the board vote on it going on the ballot. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
And you, trustee Panas? Trustee?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Panas.
I, I would be in favor of having, it doesn't have to be a near-in sunset, you know, fifteen years, 10 years, but I, I think there ought to be a sunset on this.
Thank you. trustee Clavas?
I, I don't have any comments at this time, but I do need to let you know that since I've been on with you all since 5:00 PM, I got to step away now. So forgive me for having to get some sleep tonight. But I trust the board will make good decisions. Take care, everyone.
Thank you, trustee Clavas. trustee Phillips?
Thank you. I know that there is a need. It's an obvious need. But in the spring, I supported Measure R with reservations. And the reservations that I had, I spoke very openly about. The community that I live in is probably the lowest income community in the school district. And, but I supported, I went ahead and supported Measure R and, and I did. I'll, I'll just leave it at that. And now we're in a depression. Or at least a recession, and I think things are going to get worse. We have record unemployment. And I, I have a lot of difficulty supporting another local tax. Ms. Burkhart called in and talked about schools and community first. And I think that that, for me, is a better option. And that is something that I do support because I think in a time like this, it's very important that the burden is spread out evenly among the state. And I think that the schools and community first ballot measure does that. But actually creating a, a new tax on top of Measure R in the middle of a depression, I just, I don't think that's what you do to your neighbors. So I know I'm one person, but I don't have any intention of supporting this.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Lada?
Yes, I just want to say I definitely support putting this parcel tax on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I hear what the other board members said, and I, I share that. I think that the time to do it is now. I know that we are in a pandemic, but I also understand that we're in a presidential election. And if that amount had already been budgeted, because it was a possibility, I think that it makes complete sense to go forward with it. So, Mr. Duffy and Mr. Walton, I noticed that, you know, you need direction from the board on this item. So it sounds like the majority of the board would be in favor of moving forward with this item. So we should get it agendas for the next meeting to continue.
Thank you very much. We will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Thank you, Mr. Duffy and board members. Our next discussion is item E4, discussing, discussion of new proposed budget resolution.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce it, and then I'm going to let Dr. Wald speak to some of the budget details. So if we could bring this PRCs up, that would be helpful. Thank you. So in the PRCs, we tried to outline a little bit of the history of this budget resolution and sort of how this came to be. This resolution, there was an original resolution that was submitted by Mr. Panas. And so here, we've talked a little bit about kind of the context and why we don't think the resolution as submitted by trustee Panas is appropriate. And we don't, staff does not recommend moving the budget resolution forward. We have created an alternative resolution if the board is absolutely dedicated with passing some type of budget resolution. And in terms of the details that we very specifically disagree with, I'll let Dr. Wald get into that. But we really do, while we do believe deeply in accountability, we do not want to create a situation that is not sustainable for staff or board in terms of creating more and more and more steps for, for items to be moved through. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Wald. But again, in, in reviewing this, I certainly did not agree with the original resolution. We did our best to craft something separate. And then, you know, again, if board wants that, we can. And then, you know, again, if board wants that, we can bring the alternate one forward. At least that's staff's recommendation. Sorry to be clear. So you have two attachments. And I'll let Dr. Wald get into some of the details of these resolutions. Thank you.
So we want to start off and say that we absolutely agree with the principles of the original resolution and even the principles of another resolution. We have an obligation to provide information to our community. We have an obligation to be transparent with how our dollars are spent. And we have an obligation to make sure that everything we do is clearly delineated throughout. There are a lot of needs in this district and there are a lot of challenges. Over the last year, we started a pathway in September towards reducing the 39 million in the current year, getting true cuts built in for this coming year. The pandemic came and we still kept ourselves poised to move forward, even with worsening economic conditions. We are on pathway to do everything that the board has asked us to. Board bylaw 9932 on the contracts, we froze contracts until we can bring only contracts that have solid AMOs to the board moving forward. We moved the purchase limit down to the 25,000 again, so that we're truly keeping to light the ideals of checking how we're spending every dollar. This resolution creates several more committee meetings that take staff time to feed those committee meetings and continue to do that. And what we're finding is we need time to do the actual work to train our staff to operationalize. The biggest learning that I had when I walked in this district was that there was so many meetings and so many presentations that staff was running from one meeting to the next and trying to, as soon as one boarding is, board meeting was over, we're trying to create the presentation materials for the next. We need to be able to create the actual systems that maintain this permanently so that we never have a financial issue before. Later tonight, we'll be talking about cash that's now going to be presented at the second board meeting every single month so that we're continuing to go forward. I am 100% committed to meeting the accountability that this board has asked for. 100% committed to making sure that we present to our community groups. And we have many of them that we do present through. Our recommendation is that we truly have the processes in place. We don't need another resolution. But if we do, please do take the time to read the draft that we submitted because it does illustrate that we're going to hold ourselves accountable. And even if the board doesn't pass that resolution, that's the plan that we put in writing two weeks ago in the Friday letter. That's still the plan that we have in place. So again, we're committed. We thank trustee Panis for his diligence to ensure that we're doing the right thing. We just don't think we need to continue to do it in a micromanaging way. We can do it collectively and collaboratively together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wald. Mr. Walton, do we have any public comment before board discussion?
There's one public comment, Leslie Reckler.
Thank you.
Ms. Reckler?
Hello, good evening. I'll keep it really short. Once again, fiscal accountability and transparency is absolutely important. I appreciate Mr. Panis, and I read his resolution. And I was deeply concerned about the level, I mean, what I'd like you guys to do is to read that resolution and then think of yourselves having to do that job. You're all professional people. You've had professional careers. Your professionalism needs to be respected. You need to be empowered to do your job. I would quit that job in a heartbeat because I was just completely micromanaged and not allowed to do the job with grace and dignity. And so when you read that, think about your own jobs and think about whether you would like to work in an environment that's like that. The board's responsibility is to set up systems and structures that empower their people and let them rise to their best and not to micromanage them. So please think about that. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. So we are going to start with our discussion and it's 11:15. Trusty Bunnas?
Thank you, President Jervis. So I know that there's many opinions on this. I will just note that, you know, our board bylaws do say that we have a budget committee. Among the other committees, we should have a budget committee. You know, staff, and that's, I'm not talking about the budget committee, even though it was like we created last year. Board bylaw says we actually have a budget committee. So if people don't want to do that, they don't want to do it. We have a district budget engagement committee. I guess I have a few questions about, for staff about this. Regarding the budget, I'm looking at bullet four in the resolution that I provided. And it says, "The budget is created as a new document based on students. Budget development starts from scratch and adds back to programming staff and materials have been proven to directly increase student achievement." I noticed that you didn't want to transfer that text to the resolution you put there. Briefly, can you say why that was impractical?
Can I say something on that? I mean, when I read that language, that we're going to start from scratch. To me, that reads basically, lay off everybody. Start the whole thing over every year. And that's just not, I mean, that's not feasible. And so to me, it's unclear what's being asked for in language like that. And so that was one fear I had of like, how extreme are we talking when we say, start the entire budget over every year? I'll let Dr. Wald maybe share his concerns. But for me, it was certainly that sort of macro level of like, what exactly are we talking about here?
And that's the first part. 85% of our budget is staff. So to start from scratch, you would have to do a formal resolution to do layoffs every year and create that anxiety of all your staff. Secondly, only 15% of our budget is non-salary, of which as we went through last year, we went through that exercise to make very significant cuts there. There's very little left to cut in there other than discretionary funds that are for academic programs. So you're really looking at staff cuts to redo. We've already built in with 9932, our contracts cannot be renewed without proper AMOs. So we've already put a safeguard in there that does require us to, in a sense, go back to scratch for those things that are not fixed expenses. So as written, we're doing that through the exercise that we've done now through the DL cap to finding the priorities through each of our groups. So we felt that that wasn't something that made sense in a budget that is predominantly people.
Okay, so thank you. Like, we all know we have bargaining agreements. We can't just go break the bargaining agreements. But if you choose to interpret it that way, that's okay. I want to go down a little bit further here. So we were okay on the cash flow. Position control report. You didn't include that in your budget resolution. I mean, in theory, in theory, position control got us into this. We heard Mr. Clark taught last year how we're going to have position control, like, taken care of, going on to their system. I just don't see that having a position control report is a large burden, like unless we don't really have position control under control yet.
We have implemented position control. It's in progress of finalizing it. We just hired a person to be in charge of that for this year. They started two weeks ago. Part of what we, I spent the entire year last year is starting to develop the infrastructure and the systems. We made a massive reorganization of our operations division to get everyone in the right places. They started two weeks ago. We're now building those systems to create that. That report would take a person, pretty much every day, they would be uploading things onto the website. This also now, while we do through Transparent California, put our employees' names and salaries out there. This is not something that our employee groups want to have that front and center as we go forward. We keep position control to ensure that no position is hired that hasn't been approved in the budget. But to create that undue burden, again, it's about creating reports versus doing the work of maintaining the system. And so we see that.
Okay, thank you. That's enough. Thank you. So I completely get it about the employees. And I don't have, it doesn't have to be, I didn't mean to suggest that's been the employee's name. If we just said, you know, fifth grade teacher at Madera School. If we just said, all the teachers at Madera School. But I like, it's, I'm really unhappy to hear you saying that we don't really have this information available to us. I don't know why you think it has to be uploaded to the web every day because we said once a month. But I, to me, like, being able to, like, you can't tell me once or what month, who, you know, what kind of positions do we have at every site? And how they're paid for. Because I also heard that part of all our problem and negotiating with our bargaining is, was we didn't know where the money came from. It's like, it sounds to me like we're saying, like, we still don't know what's paying for each position. Nor do we know, nor do we want to, nor do we have a system where we can select, say, here's all the positions we have at a site and how are they paid for? So is that correct? We don't have that yet?
No, we do have position control in place. We have the ability to identify exactly what is assigned to each site. That's been the pieces we've done. It's the burden of putting it in the formats and the requirements that you're requesting to maintain it. It changes every day. Who and what changes every single day, just like the reports we bring to the board.
That's true, Dr. Wald. Our cash flow, our cash flow changes every day. But we don't ask you to tell us it every day. We ask you to tell that once a month.
What then follows up is having to do a long explanation of every change between every month. Because that's, the second you start providing those information, where there are interim changes, what you're asking staff to do then is spend their time defining every single micro change that happens in the budget. Again, as your CBO, the board can direct us whichever way you want. This, however, is not going to allow us to focus on what we need to be doing, which is building systems that are ongoing.
I'm like, I'm just really disappointed to hear that you, we can't hear once a month, we can't see a list once a month of who's where and how they're paid for. And like, what positions are filled and what's paid for.
And I'll remind you that the transparency tool does have the employee position and information on there. And that has been updated again. So that is available.
Like, it's working now after?
It is. We worked with the company and it is back up online. And it has been updated to have employee information at the site level.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Trusty Bunnas and Dr. Wald. Trusty Phillips?
Thank you very much. Dr. Wald is the person that I am depending on, frankly, to direct us out of this mess that we are in. When we got into this mess, it happened over a period of years. But other than Dr. Wald, everybody was around who's on this call. All the panelists were around at some point during us getting into this mess. And so I know how we got here. I know who's new. It's Dr. Wald. And frankly, I'm going with his advice because I want to get out of this mess. And he is frankly, the person that I have the most confidence in, in helping us get out. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Trusty Phillips. Trusty Latta?
Yes, I think this resolution is totally unnecessary. We really don't need it. It's micromanaging and in fact, it would be detrimental to the district. It's just not necessary. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Latta. Mr. Duffy, a quick question. In the PRC, I noticed that it says that the board clerk and the superintendent. Let me look at that line. I just want to clarify that it says staff and board clerk strongly disagree with this budget resolution. But nowhere does it say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the board president, that I wanted to bring this forward and that I agreed with most of the resolution. Can I ask why?
I think that was, I'm sorry that we didn't include that. I think we understood that as implicit when we were saying there's board support for it. So we wanted to make sure it was explicit in some way that staff didn't agree with it. And that a trustee didn't agree with it, who's part of the agenda setting team. So I apologize, we could have made that more explicit, that you are in support of that. I also know we did discuss that together in agenda setting, which led us to craft the next resolution. So again, you know, please feel free to share your thoughts here. And I'm sorry if we didn't represent that clearly in the PRCs.
Thank you for that explanation. I just thought it was very odd when I read that, that it showed, you know, essentially that there were sites to it. And why, why wasn't the other side also represented in the PRC? And it's a miniscule detail, but I think that it just gives me a message about how things are being agendized. And we did have a discussion about that. And to me, I quite frankly, don't understand what is problematic about transparency and it being a burden, because we're an actual public institution. So how is public transparency as an institution? How is it a burden to try to build those systems? And I'm not saying that they're going to be built overnight. And I'm not saying it's going to land squarely on our CBO and Dr. Wald. I'm saying that this is something that we have to really consider because we need to ensure that we don't allow for the district to be in the mess that it was before. And I know that last year we passed a resolution. I don't know if it was in July or August. I can't remember. I'll go back and look. But it was essentially saying that we needed to have a more focused and hands-on approach because we wanted to make sure that the money that we do have, you know, that is not spent on salaries and on people, that is actually spent on the education of kids, is closely monitored. And I'm not saying that we need a cash flow update every single day. I'm not saying that we need to know which staff is specifically in which position. I'm not saying that at all. But I think that for me, it was important to bring this type of resolution forward so the board could have a conversation. Because I think that by stating in the PRC that staff and the board clerk were against it, that was already taken aside without allowing the actual governing body to have a clear discussion about it. In the past, we've had resolutions brought to us by other board members without clear action steps about how they're going to be implemented or the cost to the district. Yet we've had those and they've been talked about as a board. And nowhere in the PRC does it say, the president is for this, the clerk is for this or against this. So to me, it is just not okay to have this type of behavior in the way that we're, that we're agendizing items. So I would request that in the future that we don't show that we're taking sides like that. You can make a formal and official and professional recommendation in the same way that it's done in the past. So that would be my formal request to staff. And it doesn't mean that I don't trust staff. I do. I do trust staff. But I also am entrusted with making sure that I provide oversight that is clear and transparent. And regardless of how we vote on any of these resolutions, I think that it is, it is of utmost importance that we have a clear discussion on the resolutions without trying to sway people into a political conversation. Because I do not want it to go this way. We need to have a conversation that is really focused on how are we ensuring that we're building systems that are going to live here long before us, before, you know, after us. So I just, I want to make sure that, you know, in the future, when there's not clarity about any resolutions brought forward by board member, by any board member, that we check in with them and that we clarify, is this what you mean by this? Or this may be problematic because of this. But offering an actual explanation. And so, yeah, I am disappointed at that because I don't think we're trying to have a shot at micromanaging. And I'm not, you know, I just, I just don't, don't get why we couldn't have a clear discussion that didn't have to be like, no, you're micromanaging. This one person has to be the savior and get all of this done. Like, I trust Dr. Wald, but I also want to make sure that I'm building systems that support his work and do not make it more burdenous for him. But at the same time, how can I look and say, like, this percentage, you know, of funds is actually being spent on educational services for kids or supporting supplies? And this is how we're paying for this position? And having that position control was part of the conversation that we had last summer. So that's going to be that on that. But I really want us to have a clearer conversation and agenda setting so that we agendize things in a way that is clear for trustee Latta, for myself as the agenda setting team and for you two and to check in with any board member in advance on things that need clarity and resolutions that are brought forth, you know, for the board to have a discussion.
I understand. I would just, I would simply offer that everything, pretty much everything we bring forward is under the assumption, when we bring something- Is under the assumption when we bring something for action or discussion. For action, like we're going to, the staff recommends bringing it forward, um, so, so I felt that in this case. It was necessary in some way, some point out that that's unusual and we usually don't actively. Go against something that is on the board agenda, uh, but that we felt strongly enough that it, we needed to articulate that, so. I understand that, uh, we'll try to do a better job of, of framing, uh, the discussion. And show either where everybody stands or where nobody stands, um, so that that's, uh, you know. Reflects, uh, what you're asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm not sure, um, if we're going to have to bring back, um. A resolution that has more clarity based on the conversation that we just had, um, and so that trustee Cuevas can also be present during that. I, I don't know, I don't think we're going to have enough. A majority from the board at this point, um, I don't know if anybody would like to make a motion or make any, um, suggestions to bring it back. For discussion or I just, you know, want to hear very quickly from everybody.
Trustee Pannis.
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis, I guess I would say like the big thing and I mean, like. I wish the staff had reached out to me and said like, what, what about this, what about this, what about this, and now it's just like, okay, we're going to jump on it when we get to the meeting. So I'd be happy with the staff's revolution if we just added like, staff will work to provide regular position control reports. Because like, to me, like if I, if I had to give, I could give up most of the things in here, but like the position control report. It's why we're in the trouble we are right now and to say that we cannot produce a monthly position control report, it's great, so. I'd be happy to take the staff's resolution with the position control report, some reasonable language there added to it. But we can't vote this time because it's not on for action.
Yes. Thank you, trustee Pannis, um, trustee Phillips.
Um, I mean, if we want to bring back the same item, so, uh, trustee Cuevas could hear it and give her opinion, I, I guess that's fine. But I don't really see any reason to change anything. At this point, because she's not here, right, and so I, the idea would be to get her opinion on what's before us right now. Uh, but that said, you know, you want to bring it back, you guys are agenda setting, you make the decision, I don't, you know, um, but. Uh, I don't think we should do this, um, I don't think that it is necessary, um, I don't think. The, uh, resolution that was proposed is necessary, I don't think the staff compromise resolution is necessary. I don't think any of it is necessary, um, and I do know that it's extremely important. For us to, you know, watch the money and that we are in a precarious situation. But I don't really think that this is about watching the money, I think to be frank, that this is about. Being able to say we did something, um, and, and, and I don't really see it having any impact other than us being able to say we did something, look at us. I don't see how this is helpful, I don't see how this changes anything. I don't really see the substance, um, so I, I, I don't support it.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, trustee Latta.
Yeah, uh, no, I'm not interested in, uh, having this come back, uh, in any form, it, it's just not necessary, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Latta, so I will be in conversation with, uh, superintendent Duffy and trustee Latta. At agenda setting to have a mutual understanding about what we're going to do with this resolution.
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our action items, we have four of them before we address the, the five consent calendar items that were pulled. It is eleven thirty five, so we're officially past the ninety minutes that the meeting was extended for. Is there a board member that would like to make a motion to extend it to twelve?
Some of them.
Seconded. By me, can we please take a vote?
Hannah's side.
Hello, May.
Laura, no.
And then this drive is yes. So the motion does not pass to yes, to no, a trustee Cuevas absent, um, we do have certificate provisional internship permits. And other items that may be on a tight schedule, Mr. Duffy, can you please, um, explain if there's any items that need to be approved tonight?
Uh, I'm going to need, am I, am I muted, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry, I'm looking at the agenda, I'm going to need to hear from my team, I believe, uh, number one and two, we'd want a quick authorization on. To be able to get, um, staff on board, uh, the consent items, I need to hear from my team. And the team can text me and I can speak to the board from there. And I would of course like to get F three done for Dr. Wolf, uh, but it can wait. And that's all our items.
Thank you, um, so and actually F four was pulled and I didn't mention that right now, so we only have three action items, so. I'm going to make a motion that we extend to twelve fif- not to twelve fifty, my, my, oh no, eleven fifty, not twelve fifty, eleven fifty. That's thirteen more minutes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Pannis, can we please take a vote?
Hannah's yes.
I love no.
Laura, no.
And on this drive is yes, motion does not pass to extend the meeting to eleven fifty. To yes, yes, yes again, trustee Pannis and myself, to no, trustee Phillips and trustee Latta and trustee Cuevas absent.
So we need E one, E two. D, C, C two and C eleven.
Can you repeat those again, please?
E one, E two, C two, C eleven.
So you mean F one, right, F one, F two?
Yes, I'm sorry, F one, F two. F one, C two, C eleven.
C two and C eleven.
C. Hold on, sorry.
It's okay.
C five.
Can I just make a point of order really quick?
Yes, trustee Phillips.
The original motion was to end the meeting at eleven thirty, we have now had two motions to try to extend the meeting that have been voted down and what I feel like is happening, to be frank. Is that the motion, the original motion is being ignored, that it was eleven thirty and then the two motions. That have just been voted down, they're being ignored, um, and I just feel like this is actually what we're doing is out of order, the, the motions failed, the meeting. Is over and people are just keeping it going because they don't like the way the vote ended up, that's where I think it's happening.
Thank you, trustee Phillips for making that point of order, I, I hear your point and I also want to acknowledge that I needed to check with superintendent Duffy on anything that needed a vote ASAP. And I understand you voted no twice as well as trustee Latta and I get that, so if that's the will of the board and we're not going to have a majority to vote on those things that. Have time constraints, then I will work with trustee Latta and Mr. Duffy to have, um, a special meeting specifically for these items that need. To be approved ASAP. Superintendent Duffy, um, can we please communicate tomorrow morning with trustee Latta about scheduling a time for these items that we did not get to today?
Yes.
And can I, and just one more point of order, because now I feel like, well, if you don't do it now, we're going to have to have a special meeting, we already have a special meeting called for the twenty ninth. So there's not any reason that this can't be tagged onto the special meeting you already called, now I feel like we're being punished because we didn't vote yes. With that said, I, I'm done because I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but that's how I feel.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, and I respect your viewpoint, I know that this meeting has gone long and I also understand that there are time constraints on things that we have to approve. So I will work with, uh, trustee Latta and superintendent Duffy to figure out if they can be moved to the July twenty ninth meeting. But it sounds like there may be some things that will need to be scheduled, um, sooner, so without, this is a public service and I understand there's public still with us right now and we're going to. Adjourn our meeting at eleven forty and I, um, will let the community know. When we're going to take care of these four items that we did not get to today. Thank you, everybody, please stay safe, wear your masks, see you soon, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, bye bye.